if everyone, everyone would please, welcome Archbishop Slater to the podium to lead us in prayer and then the pledge of lea.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for your kindness and your mercy and your grace, blessing even this city, Lord, as we continue to move forward. Father, we ask you to bless these who are speaking on behalf of our communities. Father, we ask you, Lord, to give them wisdom in making decision, and even the staff of the city, Lord, encourage them. Father, as we continue to move forward, God, we say thank you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clark, if you would, please conduct a roll call.
Mayor Gayler.
President.
Councilwoman Boyet.
Present.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Matthews.
Present.
Councilwoman Weeks.
Present.
Councilwoman White.
Present.
All right, those President accounted for, thank you for your time and your commitment. Pro Tim Jones did notify me that she has a matter that was out of her control. She will be here just as quickly as she can, so we wish her safe travels as she gets here. So we will move directly into our adoption of the agenda. Mr. Livingston, is there any motions or any changes to come from staff?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right.
This time.
All right. Council, is there? Yes, ma'am.
So I would like to make a motion to take off the, under new business, eight point three, discussion of social media practices and table that until the October 20th meeting. I don't know if everyone's aware, but I had surgery a couple of weeks ago, and I've not had time to look into this and be prepared as I would like to be, um, to give good insight.
Are there any objections to that? Hearing none? Yes, ma'am.
So how do you feel about the other new business items, point eight point one and eight point two? They were, they were their new business, too.
Eight point three is what I'm asking for today.
All right. Are there any other recommended changes to the budget? Or sorry, not the budget, the agenda? Budget's not this meeting, though. All right, hearing none, we'll call for a motion to approve the agenda as the business order of the day with the modification of removing eight point three.
So moved.
All right, motions have been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented with the exclusion of item eight point three. Any further debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote in the skits. All right. Vote electronically, log your votes.
We're missing someone.
Yeah, it makes sense, actually. All right, motion passes on a vote of six, uh, six zero. All right, we have an agenda. Let's move directly into section four. Item four dot one is a proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas each year from the fifteenth of September to the fifteenth of October, National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated throughout the United States. And whereas Hispanics comprise roughly fourteen, eleven point four percent of the population of the state of North Carolina as of June twenty twenty four, and have both an integral and necessary community in our state. And whereas Hispanics comprise twelve point seven percent of the population of Wayne County as of twenty twenty two. And whereas the city of Goldsboro openly welcomes and supports its distinct cultural diversity. And whereas we are further inspired by the economic, social, and cultural contributions of the Hispanic community within the city of Goldsboro and Wayne County. And whereas we understand that although this national recognition lasts each year for one month, we work endlessly to create a more socially inclusive and diverse society with equality for all populations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Goldsboro, North Carolina, and extend best, best wishes to all of our communities as they hold appropriate ceremonies to commemorate this observance. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, to be affixed, this the twenty second day of September, twenty twenty five. And I believe we have some folks who would like to come forward and be recognized and receive this, uh, this proclamation. Whatever you feel comfortable with. So first of all, everyone come right around here. Well, so the camera is this direction. And Sablon, do you mind if I hand you the microphone and let you introduce and say a few things?
Yes.
There we go.
Good evening.
Then you start with the gracias. Thank you. I don't know if these words have ever been said in Spanish in these chambers. Buenas tardes, señora Talby. Doctor Don Charles Gaynor. Consejales, señora Doña Jamie Taylor, señora Doña Randy Maki, señora Doña Beverly Weeks, señor Don Free Forbien, señor Don Rodrick White, señores y señoras ciudadanos de la ciudad de Goldsboro, y en especial honorables miembros de la comunidad hispana de Wayne County. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Charles Gaynor Esquire. Councilmembers, Madame Jamie Taylor, Madame Randy Taylor, Madame Beverly Weeks, Mr. Try, Boyet, and Mr. Rodrick White, citizens of Goldsboro, Goldsboro, and in particular, the honorable members of the Hispanic community in Wayne County. On October twelfth will be the five hundred thirty third anniversary since Spain arrived in America, the continent. A clash of cultures happened that has resulted in what we are today. A culture forged as an alloy tempered by conflict, common grounds, understanding, patience, and compromise. Furthermore, in the fifteen twenties, fifteen forties, Spanish visited the territory that today is North Carolina. In fifteen sixty seven, Juan Pablo established Fort San Juan in the Piedmont region, establishing friendly ties with the Joara peoples. That is eighteen years before Silverwater Rally arrived to our state. We commemorate the Hispanic Heritage Month in September because in this month, in eighteen ten, starting with Mexico in the eve of the sixteenth of September, followed by Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Nicaragua, et cetera, gained their independence from Spain. On behalf of the Hispanic community in Wayne County, I want to sincerely thank you for issuing this year's proclamation recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. These days, this proclamation is more than words on paper. It is a brave and powerful acknowledgement of the rich cultural contributions, resilience, and history of Hispanics in Ameri, of Hispanics Americans in our city and across the nation. From business owners to teachers, farm workers, city workers, artists, scientists, students, engineers, and beyond, the Hispanic community has played and continues to play a vital role in shaping the diverse and vibrant fabrics of this city. By officially recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, you tell our youth that their parent sacrifices are seen, that they are valued, and have a place in our shared future. We are grateful for your willingness to build bridges, foster understanding, and create opportunity together. Gracias. Again, this meaningful gesture.
Sir. You and you and your colleagues have continually, continuously been a friend to this city, to myself, to this council. We appreciate each of you being willing to come forward this evening and just simply be here, acknowledge this, and it is more than words on paper. This is a community that wants to grow. This is a community that wants to include all cultures and wants to, wants to expand, and you're an important part of that, so thank you.
Thank you.
As they exit, anyone else that so chooses may as well. We will move forward with our next item, which is our National Night Out proclamation. And as everyone I think is aware, National Night Out was scheduled a little bit later in the fall this year, and hopefully to take advantage of some cooler temperatures, but we'll see. If y'all would. All right. Whereas the National Night Out proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a unique nationwide crime and drug prevention program called National Night Out. And whereas the city of Goldsboro will be joining other North Carolina communities in observing National Night Out on the first Tuesday in October to take advantage of the cooler temperatures. And whereas the annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Goldsboro to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime and drug prevention efforts. And whereas the city of Goldsboro plays a vital role in assisting the Goldsboro Police Department and Wayne County Sheriff's Department through joint crime and drug prevention efforts in the city and county, and is supporting National Night Out twenty twenty five locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Goldsboro be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime and drug abuse in Goldsboro and Wayne County. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety and awareness, and cooperation are important themes of National Night Out program. Now therefore be it resolved that the Goldsboro City Council does hereby call upon all citizens of the city of Goldsboro to join the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the annual National Night Out on October seventh, twenty twenty five. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and affix a seal of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, this the twenty second day of September, twenty twenty five. I look forward to seeing everyone there. I hope that you will take that information back to your community organizations, your, your churches, your schools, and let's make sure we can get some folks out there and have a little bit of fun. And maybe, who knows, maybe it actually will be a little bit cooler this year. All right. Next, we will move to item four dot three, which is a presentation from our Recreation Advisory Commission.
Guess I'm back again.
Welcome back.
All right, well, first of all, I want to say thank you again for allowing us to serve on the committee's team we have pulled together that each district is represented, and we're thanking the council for allowing us to serve, as well as the mayor, and also city manager and all. What you see here today is a picture of that, the collaboration between community relations as well as the Department of, Department of Parks and Recs Advisory Committee. We also received a check to help with the inclusive playground up in Northern Park, and we are working on that as we speak, as we see. So our committee is made up where you have, uh, you have to be a resident of the city of Goldsboro, strive for representation. We strive for representation in all of our districts. Right now, we have a vacancy with District One, as well as a student vacancy that we do have. The members have various backgrounds. We meet the third Tuesday of each month, six P M. It used to be at W A Foster Center, but now we're meeting at Edgewood. So we're, um, it's been definitely a blessing, and let's go into that building, which has really been kept well, and we're excited about what that's going to take place in that area. Councilman White serves as our, our ex officio member, who also sits out with us as well in our meetings. He comes as often as he can, as well as our director, Felicia Brown. And this is the makeup right now of who is there. I'm the co-chair as well with Larry Gerard, representing District Five, Cassandra Cox, representing District Six, Iris Robinson, District Five, Barbara Baker, District Four, Chad Evans, District Five as well, and Ricardo Ballot, District Six, and Charles Henry, District Three, and we call her Candy Morgan, District Two. And the two vacancies, as you can see, we have a vacancy for that will last for three years, as well as the vacancy for the student, which will last for one year. And if there, anybody's interested in being a part of it, we really encourage them to come and be a part of what we're doing. Things we worked on this year, we set up a scholarship fund that will allow businesses to contribute, so no child will be denied the opportunity to play. We've come to find out that there's some children have been missing the opportunity enjoying what we offer as a city at W A Foster, and outlining of things that we're doing, the programs, and sometimes they don't have the monies, or they have a larger family and everybody's not met. So we thought it not robbery to come together and see what we can do to get others to invest in our own children, especially during the summer. And we also have allowed, uh, the city has allowed us to have a line item that it does not connect with the general budget, but we have our own monies that we're raising during the year so that they can put something to, to the table. They can come and say they want to donate. We have a form to be filled out, and that has been released, and we've been pushing that forward. So that's some of the things we've been working on. Things also we've been working on this year, updating the comprehensive master plan for Parks and Recreation using McGill Associates. R S E served as a steering committee. We were partly, we met with some of the things and trying to help and giving an idea of what to do and how to do, and what we see from our area. The plan will provide a roadmap for the next five to ten years. Plan will also be critical as Parks and Recs Department applies for grants. And while we're here, I think that the city, if we may encourage that, we may be able to find someone who can work full time to find grants, especially as the monies are getting scarce, things are getting, the prices are changing. We need somebody to go that can be aggressive and get out and get more monies, especially with our parks and recs. We have a lot of land that has really been allocated to do some tremendous things, and the parks look wonderful. The committee had the opportunity to go to each park. We went to each park, looked around, seeing what we need, what's happening. We also compared our parks to some of the other outlining cities, and we are in the top. We're in the top, and we just, um, thank you for allowing us to continue to do this. So we continue looking at some other things, and we went to the park again, identifying the areas that needed maintenance as our parks and facilities. We have a lot of things, I think that it's not even just the maintenance. I think that a lot of people don't realize the blessing that we have here in the city. A lot of cities don't have the parks we have, and that's the comments we've been getting as well. Questions?
I will. So one, thank you again, you know, volunteering time, you know, trying to improve the city and the quality of life for, for everyone involved. As you were going around and doing your tours and you were identifying different parks and comparing them to different communities, are there other key assets that you saw in other communities that you would really like to replicate in Goldsboro? Are there pieces of what we have on our asset sheet that maybe don't bring as much value as we think that they do? And, and if there's, if there's candid conversation to be had, that may be something that happened in the commission and not right here this evening, but are there things that you really want us to press on as part of this master plan that we're building out?
Couple of things that came across. One, we were looking at the electricity in some of our parks. That's a needed thing, as well as possibly cameras, you know, for the safety of our citizens and things that's happening outside, um, that the police don't have to be there, but they have access there. The other part was that we were looking at, we probably need more equipment to help upkeep the property to make it look the way it can look, and I think that's as we're going, I think that's in the plan to replace some things that we're going. And, and like everywhere, we need some more personnel, and we noticed that to care for the, the parks that we do have. And I think that we're doing well with that. And the thing about the other cities, we saw that even our pricing is better. I think the, I'm a little overstepping, but I think the county can do a little better in helping us with our parks, since they benefit as well. And the taxpayers are here also joining. I just, that's just, you know, thought that we were conversing on in our meetings, and we just know all the help we can get, you know, and it's just not fair. But the city, you know, we do make, there is a disparity where the county pays one price and the city pays, but it's still not. It's not fair enough, though. But that's what we are with it, and I think that we have a great time in what we can do, you know, and I think that if we encourage the families to come out to the parks and just like, you know, the nights out and the things of that nature, if we have more programs in the park, will bring attention to the park and even so.
Understood. Thank you. Council?
I will follow up with one of his comments, and I do agree that we talked at length about the resources from the county, um, that we really need to look at our pricing as it relates to the county, because we're the only show in town when it comes to recreation outside of the Parks and Rec in Mount Island. We're, we're the only one in the county, and we house more than just the city of Goldsboro who, who use our, our facilities, as well as when they did the, the actual survey, the number one thing on the survey was the aquatic center. That was the number one thing, and I, and I flashback to, I'm showing my age here, when we had the community building here downtown, where they had the indoor pool, and we lost that actual facility. So I think that if we could really, you know, look at, I know it's some, some, some meters down the road, but however, that was the number one asker from our survey. As far as, you know, what we would like to see in, in Wayne County and Goldsboro, and it was in aquatics.
I'm looking forward to getting that. Is, is it next meeting or meeting after that the?
I think it's the, uh.
October sixth, right?
Yeah, I think so.
I think it's the next meeting where that we'll actually have McGill.
November.
Or is it November? Excuse me, there we go. I'm looking forward to, to that, and they're, they're kind of finalizing things. It's a, it's amazing to me to see the geographic range of folks that utilize our park system.
There's also something that came up, it just came to my mind, that District Six, we, doesn't have really a park that they can go to, and I think that, I think that's on the radar, that we can keep eyes open to what we can do for that community, that we can also build something as we've been doing.
Just the last thing, I know, I don't want to beat this dead horse back to life, but we really need to, to, to talk and initiate a discussion, not just say we need to, something from the county, but we need to initiate a discussion so that we can come up with some kind of price point that, that is fair for the citizens of Goldsboro. Not saying that they need to come in and do everything, but they do advertise our facilities. So, so I do think that they rightly so, they need to put in on, on maintaining them, because to, to my, to my recollection, the, the gentleman said that our parks are well maintained, but they're just. they're just overly loved.
Yep, that's the phrase. Yep.
Questions?
All right. I agree, and I very much look forward to the conversation, and we'll help initiate the conversation. Counsel, is anybody else with comments or questions for Archbishop Slater? Sir, again, thank you, and I don't know, we may see you back at the podium before the agenda's over, but appreciate you coming before us twice tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, well, with that, we'll move to item 4.4, and this is a resolution expressing appreciation for services rendered by Michael Darden as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than 27 years. Whereas Michael Darden retires on October 1st, 2025, as a senior heavy equipment operator with more than 27 years of service with the City of Goldsboro. And whereas Michael began his career on July 22nd, 1998, as a motor equipment operator one with the Public Works Department. And whereas on November 6th, 2002, Michael was promoted to his new position of motor equipment operator two with the Public Works Department. And whereas on November 17th, 2021, Michael was promoted to senior heavy equipment operator with the Stormwater Division of Public Works Department, where he has served until his retirement. And whereas Michael has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. And whereas the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to Michael their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that we express to Michael Darden our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after this September 22nd, 2025. And Ms. Gutz, I need a vote on that one, don't I? All right. Counsel, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt the resolution as presented. Is there any debate? Hearing none, we will call the vote. Thank you, Ms. Gutz. All right, if we don't, if it doesn't come up, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same time, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. All right. Mr. Darden, if you are watching, or if any of your friends and family are watching, please do know that we do appreciate your time and your service to this city and to its people. All right, so with that, we will move to Section 5, our public comment period. Remind everyone, the policy will be up on the screen momentarily. I'll just read from our public comment period policy. The speakers shall be civil and courteous in their language and presentations at all times. Speakers are asked to refrain from personal attacks under threats directed toward any council member, the mayor, city staff, or members of the public. Vulgar or profane language or gestures will not be tolerated, and speakers are asked to address the mayor and the council, and so please refrain from addressing the audience. So with that, Ms. Gutz, if you would please call our first name.
Our first speaker is Natalia Newkirk.
Good evening.
State my name because y'all already said it, and you know it, and I'm pretty sure the rules that were just read were for me. But I'm here once again tonight, and I pray that it's my last time, because I want to see some justice. When y'all stay here and say liberty and justice for all, I haven't seen a bit of justice for myself, my children, nor the victims that I have came here for the last three consecutive years and spoke about. Whether you like it or not, these meetings are monitored and recorded, the phones are tapped, and emails can be traced back. Mayor Gailey, you told me that your chief was going to present some things before council about things that I went down there and told his officers, retired James Sturtevant, investigator him. You know, I talked to him about Michelle Winn and Tamika Pridgen. Taj Polak confirmed some things about Michelle Winn and Tamika Pridgen.
Ma'am, we're not going to call individual.
Okay, okay, I understand.
And what was requested of the chief has been delivered to the council.
My apologies, Mayor Gailey, but you said we're going to be, in the phone, it said it was publicly, it was going to be spoken about, spoken about. But either way, I'm here tonight, and I addressed it with Councilwoman Brandy earlier, and I addressed it with y'all last year and this year. I am completely uncomfortable in this four-day movement safe house that I've been in. Y'all sit around and y'all have.
And four-day movement is not run by the City of Goldsboro.
Pastor DJ, I mean, Mayor Gailey, y'all all sit in meetings and have conversations about me. Pastor DJ have already told me that he have met with y'all concerning me. It's not hard to come together and rectify justice for things that you know are true. I wish you had the heart of God like the rest of us do. We need liberty and justice for all. Human trafficking is human trafficking. Identity theft is identity theft. All of these things I have spoken to y'all about, and justice need to be served, point-blank, period. Councilwoman Taylor, I thank you for what you do in the community. You as well, Councilwoman Brandy, Ms. Hawke does what she needs to do, especially with the Goldsboro Housing Authority attendance. When is the mayor going to do what needs to be done for us that needs justice? Liberty and justice for all. I ain't never joined the military, but I got my boots on the ground, ready to get out here and rectify justice, so children can grow up without being touched, they're safe in these schools, they're safe in these homes. I ain't never had nobody to protect me, and that's why I couldn't hear before y'all. And all you can do is set rules, set some justice. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandra Cox.
Truly is a pleasure to be here. First and foremost, I give all glory and honor to God the Father, and truly thank you, Mayor and Councilman, for all you do for our great city of Goldsboro. But I come to discuss, I stay on Central Heights Road, and I've mentioned it several times, well, several of our residents, we talked about the fact that Central Heights Road is like Indianapolis 500. We have 18-wheelers come through there all during the day. We have, you know, we have two daycares on Central Heights Road, it's a residential area. We have Eastern Wayne Middle School, and I go 35 when I come out, I have traffic back behind me, time I get to the end of Berkeley, because no one wants to go 35 miles an hour, which is appropriate. And I just wish that something could be done, maybe a three-way at Thoroughfare and Central Heights Road, and I thank you for the construction, for the new road, thank you all for all you do. But I tell you, every day at 8:45 or so, two times before, I hear the trucks, 18-wheelers coming through early in the morning, and, you know, and so I'd just like to ask if something can be done, or even that, what's that equipment, where they record the speed? The police, I don't know what that proper term is for that piece of equipment, speed trailer, yes ma'am. If some, they could have that record, maybe for a couple of weeks or so, you can see, but no one goes other than us to stay on Central Heights Road, go 35 miles an hour. So, and I have my grandbaby, I babysit, and I really don't like going in front yard, and, you know, because I never know somebody's going to come through there, and I thank God no one has had an accident, or, but I would like for something possibly please be done on for speeding on Central Heights Road. And thank you so much for your attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Craig.
If you would, make a note.
Before we move on.
Yes, sir.
Just a second. Dr. Craig, we have addressed that problem several times, but the problem is if we're not having consistent, not saying the police are not out there, but if we don't have some type of presence at that particular moment, then it gets out of hand again, so maybe a speed trailer would. Now that the road is newer and it's a longer stretch now, it's worse.
Understood.
Mayor, would it be okay to respond and share some further information? And I probably didn't loop you in on this email, but I'm aware, and we've been dealing and trying to figure out how to get our arms around that issue out there for the last month or two. The police department has several officers involved specifically in trying to get Central Heights and that neighborhood under control, and the speed trailer and the speed pole is being actively placed out there and information recorded in order to have a plan away forward. And Chief West is on top of that.
I do want to keep us on topic with the public comment period, that's good feedback. I like being able to be responsive. I want to make sure that we don't stray too far from our public comment policy, and then that way in the future, we can direct Mr. Livingston to be able to reach back out to the person, but I am glad that we were able to give good information at a time we mattered. So with that, Ms. Gutz, you said Dr. David Craig?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Craig?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, thank y'all for the opportunity to speak to you all.
Good evening.
I especially want to thank Mr. Livingston for addressing my emails that I sent to him. I think they were well thought out, but as we know, emails were, I shared the emails with many of you. And so what I'm saying is, a lot of times, three minutes is not enough for us to actually engage in a good conversation, in a good dialogue. But I really enjoyed the dialogue and the email exchange that Mr. Livingston and myself had. So obviously, I've made several suggestions, but I would like to ask you all, have I made any assertions that you would like for me to address? Or do you all feel like I was attacking in my emails? I'm kind of straight to the point a lot of times, sometimes I'm kind of suggestive, and you all know that I have a way of conducting questioning that kind of gets at certain things. So as I said to you before, I really would like to help the City of Goldsboro get better. I do believe that that email exchange over the past two weeks is what really is, that's accountability. That's what you saw. I've offered my services to the city before, and I'm going to do it again. I'll be reaching out to the Mr. Mayor, as well as city manager, see how we can move forward. Some things need to be discussed and gotten right before they get out in public. So thank you for your time. Y'all be blessed.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Viola Figueroa.
Good evening, elected officials. I would like to present myself to some and introduce myself to others. I am Viola Rouse Figueroa, a Wayne County Democrat. A couple of months ago, I got on Facebook, well, on the line for the very first time in years, and there was comments that was being made. I made the comment because I am the chair of the Wayne County Democratic Party. Your voice is your vote. I was not asking the public to single out anyone, to remove anyone from your elected seats. I kind of took some feelings at what happened after that statement was made. People's voices, as Archie Bunker would say, has been hushed. And for those that are living in nursing homes, those that are not able to climb those stairs, take it from me, open-heart surgery, I barely made it up. So that cannot come. That is our way of being able to let you all know our opinion. If you take it the wrong way, that's a self thing. But I do not think that people being able to comment should be stifled, possibly what Archie would say. January 26, 2019, I had to do the hardest thing ever in my life. I had to take my husband, which is a US Army veteran, off life support after being together 22 years. I went through a great deal by myself, and I started a nonprofit. I was blessed to get a grant from the state. Every month, I think I'm sending more than they need to be accounted for during each quarter. I would like to ask the city to help us that are, don't have big stores, that are nonprofit, that has been vetted by the state with funding. And for those that do have funding by the state, I just hope that everyone does right by it, because if a veteran can't get help, then really who can? Thank you.
That was our last speaker.
Okay. As always, I appreciate everybody's time and willingness to. We'll move to Section 6, our consent agenda, which is abnormally brief this evening, but we'll take that as a blessing instead of anything else. Mr. Livingston, would you please brief us on 6-1 and 6-2?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just have the approval of the minutes from August 18th, 2025, and September 8th, 2025, and departmental monthly reports on the consent agenda.
All right. So with that, Counsel, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, items 6-1 and 6-2?
So moved.
All right. Motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any debate? Hearing none, Ms. Gutz, if you would please put it up there, and then we can count this as our roll call vote. Motion passes on a vote of 6-0. Our consent agenda is approved. We have no old business, and we'll move directly into new business. Item 8.1, Mr. Livingston, if you would please, or Mr. Kelly, whoever.
I'll just introduce it very, very quickly. This is an item that the city council asked us to look into, actually, starting in the beginning of the calendar year, and to try to put some funding aside in the budget. And so we were successfully able to do that, and so now we're coming to you with a presentation on our proposal for the funding that we've set aside in the budget, and a way ahead beyond just the fiscal years and end it well into the future. So Mr. Arnold, if you may.
Thank you, Manager. Mayor and city council, thank you for your time tonight. Tonight, we have two large topics that we're bringing forward to you that we've been working on, staff and with consultants for several months, and we want to bring you some results of this, recognizing both of these are steps along the way of improvements that we hope to bring forward to the City of Goldsboro. The first one, as Mayor said, was the presentation of a pavement preservation program, and how we wanted to look at potentially funding streets improvements in the future. If you remember, as Matt said, we did a report, and it's a big study about our streets, and came up with results of that. You looked at that and said, how can we do more? You put some money aside in the budget to do those improvements in the future and now. And then tonight, we're going to talk about how we're going to make those improvements this year with the money we have in the budget. And Jonathan's here to talk about the strategies that we're going to use to put those improvements in place, what type of strategies those are, and what streets we're going to be thinking about putting those strategies on. Then the second part is going to be a presentation from Davenport Associates, who will also be able to talk to you about how we look forward, filling the gap we have. So if you remember, we had a gap of about $2 million a year, even with the improvements we wanted this year, to maintain the quality of streets we have today. So that's about $3.2 million a year we need, and we put 1.2 towards it this year. And so what we're going to do in the second presentation is talk about how, if you're interested, to look at how we could fill that gap and a couple of options. So the first one we're looking at, hopefully, looking at your consensus and approval of moving forward on a program. And the second one, we want to give you some information for you to think about, we'll come back to it at a later date, and how we can make those improvements more so if you're, want to put more money towards street improvements. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan, and Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I hope everybody's doing well. So like Kelly said, Matt said, we did our study last year, and, you know, what I did was I went in, broke the study down, and put everything into motion as far as, you know, that we got into treatment. know, the, we got new treatments that we're wanting to do to kind of extend the life of our streets, and just kind of went, went through the study and picked out some streets, and I'll get in more into why I picked those streets coming up, but just kind of give an introduction. So our payment preservation just kind of is proactive steps that we're using cost-effective treatments to help extend the life of our streets. Payment preservation isn't just about fixing the bad streets, it's all about, it's also about extending the life of the better rated streets, and that's where we're going to get into some of the new treatments coming up. And it, you know, along with that, it improves our payment condition rating and enhances public safety and drive comfort. And then some of the new treatments, we got crack sealing, micro-surfacing, rejuvenators, and then we got reconstruction and rehabilitation. That's a couple, the last two are the ones that we've done in the past. So getting into crack sealing, it's a rubberized asphalt material that's applied in the light block cracking that are generally greater than a quarter inch in width. I've got pictures on the right-hand side, and you can see it's, you know, you got a pickup truck pulled behind a trailer and a couple guys just, just putting it into, putting it in those cracks. So it reduces asphalt deterioration caused by water damage. It blocks water from seeping into the base layer of the pavement and prevents cracks from widening. And, you know, that's a lot of what we come across now when, when we're doing resurfacing, we don't do any crack sealing. When we resurface, it looks good for about a year or two, and then you start to see those cracks come through again. So when we start doing crack sealing, we'll do this on our, on our streets that are, you know, pretty decently rated, but we getting some cracks in there. So when we, in the future, when we go through and we resurface, those cracks will be filled up, and then we'll be able to resurface and get it smooth, and it should last a lot longer than what it does. And again, it extends the life of the pavement by preventing water from penetrating the pavement. Micro-surfacing, this is going to be a mouthful to say, but it's a polymer modified emulsified asphalt aggregate mineral filler, water, and other additives. It's applied using a specialized machine and a box spreader. Again, I got pictures on the right-hand side there, you can see how it's applied. It'll, it'll fill in the ruts and the wheel paths and correct any, any issues we have there. It extends the life of the asphalt by six to nine years. And, you know, it's, it's an easy application without doing the milling and utility adjustments, and it just, and it just go, literally go along there and spread it out, and it fills in all those ruts and, and everything. Rejuvenators, we're not doing any rejuvenators in this round yet, but it often contains malteens and oils, and it penetrates the asphalt binder, restore lost components, and it helps resist cracking and other damage. It extends the lifespan and improves durability, and it can waterproof the asphalt and cause, you know, prevent water, surface water from penetrating through and causing damage. And it, it, it helps reverse the effects of oxidation and degrades, and a process that degrades the asphalt over time. Reconstruction, that's, that's, you know, one of the typical things that we do, especially on our dirt streets, we'll do reconstruction. So we got two different ways, it depends on what they, what they want to use. Most of the time, what we've seen lately is they want to use binder, just because you can buy it from the asphalt plant, and it's just easier to get it, to get their hands on it than it is the stone. But we'll put five inches of binder in, and then we'll put two inches of asphalt over top of that, and that's what we did. We, that's a process we did over on Shelley Drive. It's been a, been a little while since I've been over there, but the last time I went over there, that street seems to be holding up really well. We did two or three blocks of that. So it can improve structural integrity and fix any underlying issues that we have with the pavement. And then it, you know, obviously, it extends the life of the pavement. We get rid of that bad base layer, and you got, you know, it got a good base and good asphalt sitting on top, and, you know, that's what it see, what you see on the side there, on the right-hand side, those are the pictures that you'll see in the field. And then rehabilitation, I mean, that's, that's cut, pretty cut and dry, that's what we've traditionally done here. Just mill the street up, inch and a half, two inches, and then you'll put another two inches on top. And then, you know, it eliminates cracks and potholes and other surface irregularities, and it adds, you know, significant years to the life, to the lifespan of the asphalt. And it's generally less expensive. Milling and rehabilitation is less expensive than rehab, but, or reconstruction, but, you know, reconstruction is also a very good method to use. So, your slideshow on your iPad, if you're looking at it, it's going to be a little off. We did our agenda prep today, so we decided to put the maps, because I can explain, you can see a little better what my thought process was when we were putting this together instead of going straight to the list. So what I decided to do when I was looking at my list, I was looking for long runs of streets that needed to be resurfaced or rehabbed or reconstructed, that were kind of in the same general vicinity of one another to keep construction costs down. Mobilization is a big cost, especially on a project like this, when you've got milling machines and rollers and asphalt machines, you know, getting those low boys in here to move that equipment gets very costly. So I was looking at Audubon from Ash Street all the way down to the end, Weaver Drive, or Weaver Street, we were looking at doing Weaver, and also on the next slide, you'll see on the rehabilitation slide, I've got Harris Street right down there, which fills together, and then you can see the other two gaps. Some were doing reconstruction, others were doing resurfacing, but, you know, it just fills the gaps in all the way down. And you got the crack sealing, you can see they're all kind of in the same general facility. We do have one outlier, but again, crack sealing's pull, you know, it's a trailer pull behind a pickup truck, so it's pretty easy to get. And then you got our micro-surfacing, you know, again, everything's kind of in the same area. We do have some outliers, but, you know, again, it's just a truck that they can drive on the road with. And then we get into the list, and I've got the districts up here, I've got the blocks we're doing, I've got the rating on the side, and this is, the first page is the rehabilitation and the reconstruction. That's where most of your money's going to be spent. You can see North Audubon from Ash to Mulberry all the way down to Olivia Mimosa. Then you got Weaver, Slocum, from Slocum Street all the way down to Poplar, Harris from Franklin, and that runs all the way to Clayborne. And then you can see the areas that we're doing crack sealing in, and you can see, you can see the, the number in the PCR there how it jumps. So that's what we're meaning by maintaining the, the higher PCRs. I'm sorry. Did, was that shining back in your eyes?
It's.
I'm sorry. You take it out all three of them.
I'm sorry.
I can't see.
I'll put that down, I didn't mean to blind you. I'm sorry. Yeah, I did, I'm sorry, I did not mean to do that. But again, you can see the PCR, the 88 up there. And then micro-surfacing, that's a, that's a little more, little more than, than what the crack sealing does. You can see the PCR, how it changes from 88 down to a 65, but again, 65 is our average PCR rating, so we're just trying to maintain the streets and maintain what we have. And I wanted to point out, the last line item there is, is Withers. So, you know, with them, we were wanting them to come in and do a little bit of work with us, because we've never done micro-surfacing, and we've never done any crack sealing before. So I just wanted them to come in, make sure that, that, you know, shop drawings when they submit, that, that, you know, we're getting the correct mixtures and slurries and all that stuff. And then they've got some construction inspection where they can actually go out, help our guys, and make sure that it's getting plowed correctly. So they're going to be kind of training our construction staff on, on the micro-surfacing and the crack sealing. And then kind of what's next, you know, it depends on, on what council decides to do, but, but, you know, oh, I'm sorry, this is the wrong, this, this is what we're going to do next as far as schedule goes. So obviously, I'm presenting this tonight, and whenever it gets approved, or the list or whatever, we're going to start design, the permitting and specifications, and then we're going to go out and do the bidding and the award process. Obviously, we have to, we want to kind of get through the holidays. I'm trying to set this schedule up so we can start the project in April when the weather starts to change, instead of, you know, putting asphalt down in the cold months. Bidding and award, that's going to take 30 days, we have to advertise for 30 days. Our pre-construction meeting, whoever we decide, or whoever the low bidder is, then we'll go into construction, I'm going to give them about six months for construction to do, to do the projects. So by October of next year, we should be finished with, with this first round of pavement preservation. And then the next steps, we're going to kind of, what I want to do on the next steps is, you know, whatever council decides to do as far as funding goes, I want to build out a 10-year CIP, like we do on all of our other projects, define our annual budget, obviously, that depends on what we're going to do later with, with Davenport, and then we'll just, I'll present it, continue to present it yearly to council and, and get approval and, and just move on that way. So that's kind of all I had. Has anybody got any questions? I'm sorry again for blinding you.
All right, Councilman Boyet, that's on your hand, and then Councilman Taylor, and then, all right, we'll, we'll work our way around. Councilman Boyet, four is yours.
Forgive me for being random with my questions, I have them all wrote down, and I was prepared and left them in the car. I didn't recall some. The first one is just for my FYI. When you come up with the list and the 25, 26 plan, how does that compare to that top 20 worst street list? Does that address all of those, and that's what this is doing, is addressing those?
So, again, what I did when I, this is, this is just a first run, you know, we've only, we got just north of 1.2 million, so the first, what I wanted to do was look at long runs where we could, you know, kind of maximize our dollars and put everything together, you know, like the rehabilitation and, and the reconstruction, all those streets are kind of within the same little area. So it's just easier for the, for those guys, thinking about it from a construction standpoint, it's just easier for them to move, move around, move the equipment around, and try to keep that dollars, dollars as low as we can.
So, could you possibly guess at roundabout how much of that top 20 is being addressed if this unfolds like you've requested?
Yeah, I mean, well, you can look at the PCR, and I mean, you can see, you know, the first street, the first street segment up there is a 19. I mean, that's, that's really, really low. So I mean, I, I would, I would say that some of the, I mean, you got a 25 in there, you got some 30s and 35s, this is going to take care of some of that top 20 that you're talking about.
Okay. And the next, well, I could say a major question, and I can weight on some of the other, that I think that I have mistook some of the previous information regarding the dollar amount that we're proposing to spend. I distinctly remember that the presentation said that we needed to spend 3.2 per year in order to stop pedaling backwards. I remember that.
Correct.
But it was my understanding, from what I remembered, that when we finished with the budget, that in round numbers, we had a million and something Powell bill, we had a million and something from the tag fee, and then we had another million and something, and we had come up with, in this FYI, the three-point whatever to spend, and we're only talking about spending 1.2, so I need to be corrected on where my misunderstanding was. If Manager maybe can.
Well, we looked at that, and I'm not sure where we are with the, we're just talking about what we got with Powell bill right now, because we put that into a, a separate fund to do these, this type of work, but maybe Kelly can address that, because I think he's been looking a little bit closer at that than I have.
Catherine's here too, Finance Director. So, all the Powell bill was being spent in the street department for operations. Pulled that out to put towards the street improvement program, to fill that gap, we increased this, that we took out for street operations, that's why we increased the vehicle tax fee to fill that gap, which allowed you to pull all the funds out for the streets for the Powell bill. But that was only, that was, we only got to 1.2 million dollars for street improvements. The balance of what you are spending on is still operating the street department.
Which is still doing the general maintenance and fixing potholes and stuff like that.
Right. But the only money, the only new money is $300,000 from the vehicle taxes.
I, I, well, then, I guess I was just absolutely, completely mistaken, because I thought we had figured out how to come up with 3 million.
And I can have Catherine.
I mean, this is part of his question.
All right, then, then please, go ahead. Ms. Taylor, I'll come up.
I think, I'm on the same, she and me, as Councilman Boyet, and only about, I, I thought we came up with two, because we set aside 1. something in the actual budget. Then we pulled out the Powell bill from, from, from where it was, and we put that there, so that makes it 2 million, I thought. And I, I wasn't tracking the three, but I was tracking the two from the Powell bill and the one that we actually budgeted for, the 1 million we actually budgeted for in the budget, if I'm not mistaken.
Finance Director says my analysis is what got budgeted.
I was hoping you were going to say, no, you're all right. It would be a lot cheaper if, if I was right and so are you. Yeah, that's, is it safe to say that's discouraging, because we don't, we don't have what I thought we had?
If, if you, is it directly related? All right, I do want to come back to, to Councilwoman Taylor, and then I'll come back to you, Councilwoman Weeks, if that's all right. Councilman White and Councilman Boyet, both of y'all were on a contiguous thought, are y'all?
I'm good for now.
Okay.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not.
Mine was related to mine.
I guess, I guess because I distinctly remember us, you know, with the Powell bill, I distinctly remember that piece, because we, we said we was taking salaries out of that. So, so I, I distinctly remember that, but I also distinctly remember us budgeting a million dollars in the actual budget. If, I, I mean, so I don't, I don't understand how we just got 1.2 million.
Well, we'll, we'll go back to, we can go back to the budget, and we can do a presentation of that, and recreate all that.
All right. I could, like, 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 Councilman Boyet, I could be mistaken, but I thought we had at least 2 million.
Yeah, if you didn't, it counted, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you didn't do anything but say Powell bill and tag, that was where I was coming up with two, right, right out, right out of the gate, and then I thought we added another one budget, and I said I was good with questions for now, because I wanted everybody else to speak in case it jarred my memory on something else. But, you know, I need to, I need to get my arms around while we're here, because the whole purpose of that discussion was that study said 3.2 to stop pedaling backwards. I thought we had found a way to get there, because we got to stop pedaling backwards in order to move forward. I mean, it's simple arithmetic, and I completely understand this didn't happen overnight, and we can't fix it overnight. But we got to start somewhere, but I thought we were out of the gate better than we were, it appears, and I need to understand why.
Was the total amount that, that the council members may be thinking about the total amount budgeted for the streets department in total, as opposed to just new construction?
I, you know, I'm not, I won't go there, because we, at that point, we're all kind of hypothesizing. But obviously, I think that this is something that's come into council, we're going to need further conversation on it for a future agenda item. So it will definitely be on our next agenda either way, so we can come back and get some of these questions answered. Councilman Boyet, Councilman White, I would like to move to other, other council members for questions, if that's okay. All right. Councilman Weeks, you said that your question was a lot, was also contiguous with this thought.
I think, I think that was my question with these guys as well, because I originally sat in on the Budget Finance Committee, and when I reviewed my notes, we had put aside what I thought was the 1.2. I remember I asked, we asked originally for the 3.2, but I remember my question to you was, can we physically accomplish 3.2 million dollars within one physical year? And I was told that we can't, that we don't really have the staffing, the supplies. And so we changed it, according to my notes, and I could be wrong, to 1.2 million dollars. And then you brought up the Powell bill in a meeting, and so I, I myself thought that it was going to be the 1.2 million that we changed it to in our budget meeting, along with the, the extra additional income from the Powell bill.
We will get clarification to be able to present at the next council meeting. Either way, I am, yes, I would love the number to be higher, and I hope that we missed, missed a line item somewhere in a, in a good way. Either way, this is more streets that have been touched in one fell swoop that have been touched in the last six, seven years. So I mean, either way, this is a positive thing, but I echo the other council members' concerns, wanting to make sure that what was budgeted is going to be spent. Councilwoman Taylor, four is yours.
Okay. So I will say that I'm under the same impression as the rest of you guys, and that's what I remember hearing too. But I did- Um, that's what I remember hearing too. Um, but I did have some questions and some suggestions since we were talking about the streets. So, um, my question is, how can we, since we have this list of streets that we're going to be working on, um, can we go ahead, since we have this list of streets, and find a way to go ahead on and look at these streets, look at these, these blocks and, um, figure out a way to see what needs to be done to these streets and to these blocks to improve them? So as far as, I'll just give you some examples, um, the trees that are blocking the stop signs, the trees that are blocking the lights from the, you know, light shining down, like we've been working on some other things. Um, making sure that our end limit signs are what they're supposed to be for each street, doing studies, whatever we have to do. Um, so that way, when we're done redoing these streets that we're redoing, that at the end of that, we can also say, okay, we've repaved or reconstructed or whatever we've done to those streets, but now these streets are good. We don't have to go back next year and do a study, or we don't have to call Duke Energy and ask them to cut down, um, trees away from the power lines. So I would just like to figure out how we can go ahead on now and plan with this list of streets to go ahead on and, and let's start on that now.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, I can, I can coordinate that with, uh, with our public works guys. They will be the ones that would cut the trees and back and all that stuff. When we, when we do resurfacing, we do look at, I know you'd mentioned earlier about striping. We do look at striping. Um, we do put striping in our contracts for that. Any curb and gutter, you know, any issues with curb and gutter, say the roots has got it bowed up or whatever. We fixed that. We'll take the roots out and we'll go in there and actually fix the curb and gutter as well. And then, you know, whatever we got to do with the street. Um, stop signs and stuff, I mean, again, we can look at, we can ask public works to go out and do some, we can ride through and look at it and see if they need to be replaced or cleaned or whatever the case is. I mean, we can, we can definitely do that.
I just want to now, since we have that definite list of streets that we know we're going to be doing these things, let's get ahead of it. So that way, when we're done with these roads, we're done with them, and that we have a clear picture of what we're going to be looking at next.
And I haven't, I haven't passed along my list yet. They've asked me about it, but I haven't passed it along yet because it hadn't been approved by council yet. So I just want to make sure I had the final list before I sent it out to public works for those guys to look at.
Councilman?
Hey Jonathan, you spoke to it a little bit, um, just a second ago, but about the striping and stuff. So as looking at the list, um, a lot of those intersections throughout the city, but I'm just going to focus on District 4 for just one second. Um, those intersections that have a left turning lane and people are sitting beside each other. You have some people who have to come here because the car is too far out here. So if that is not going to be included in this because those intersections are not here, like where does that fall? Does that still fall in our initial budget of like where we put our potholes? Or can we be intentional and have intentional monies adjust about those markings? And I know we have to be smart about that too, because if a road is jacked up and then we go and mark it.
That's right.
But I think it, it would add a lot of safety precautions to those intersections with those markings, telling people where to go and to stay in your lane.
Right, right, right. So, so one thing I will say, um, you know, traffic used to be under engineering. They just moved July 1st. Um, one thing that I pushed for was a thermo machine. Um, so just to give you an example, out here on Center Street, um, the, the stuff that was done as part of the, the, the street scaping project, that was all thermoplastic that was put down. It's little glass beads that heat up, and then you put it down that way. Um, that lasts a lot longer, and you can look at the handicap sign, the handicap place that we just put out there, how it's already faded and already going away. I mean, the marking paint doesn't last long. So it, you know, thanks to y'all, uh, in the budget, that thermo machine got approved. Well, they've ordered it, the thermo machine's here. They're trying to set up training to use it. Uh, I think, you know, I was talking to Jamie just a little bit ago, and I've ta, still talk to those guys, but, um, you know, they, they've, I think they're looking at the second week of October. But anyway, what my point is, is, you know, the, the striping that we're going to be doing, like John Street, you know, we got that plan to do, to do the parking on John Street. Uh, any striping that we do from here on out is going to be thermo, which is going to last a lot longer. So like the intersection you're talking, and I'm assuming you're talking about it, Harris and Slocum?
And even Elm and Slocum.
Yeah. So I mean, you, you know, striping, striping is a very minimal cost when it comes to stuff like this. So I mean, you know, we can restripe that intersection and add it as part of this contract and put, you know, put your new turn arrows in and, and your yellow lines and your white lines and all that. I mean, we can, we can do that as part of this project because also, you know, when you get the intersections to signalized, you got, um, um, I forget what they call them, but you know, where you pull up on the, you got the sensors down there. We, we replace all of those as well. Yeah, if it's going to get milled up or fix, we, we, we fix it, we fix all that stuff. So, um, it's going to be part of the project. And I mean, I can add that in if I want to. I mean, I've got, I've got the project at like 1.2 million dollars, and I went over a little bit because you never know where your bid's going to come back. Some, they may be lower than what you've, what you have. So we may be able to add a block or two. It just depends on how the bid shakeout.
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, four years.
So if we don't include it in this, Jonathan, so, so that we don't drive up the cost, is there money available or can we, so in my mind, I would like to see a specific
Right.
dollar amount for that striping and stuff. Cause I mean, across the city, it, there are some areas that really could use that.
So there is a line item for, um, I can't remember what, exactly what it is, but it's under the traffic guys. Um, they've, they've got, I think it's under the, um, under the signs department.
Okay.
Though, I think there's like a $25,000 line item. But if it doesn't get approved, or if it doesn't, if we can't do it in this project, we can certainly get those guys to, to stripe it and, and fix that. I mean, it's, yeah, it's something that we could do for sure. Not speaking for them, you know.
They're great guys, I'm sure they can do it.
Yeah, I mean, you worked with those guys. Y'all put the signal heads on, didn't you?
For sure.
All right. Uh, Councilman Boyet, four years?
Uh, two things. Uh, to Councilwoman Matthews' point, at the intersection of William and Mulberry, see if we can get that striped because I'll, I'll get ran over almost every day. I go through that intersection because everybody doesn't know, are they turning left or are they going straight? Because they're straddled in the middle there when I'm trying to go to the post office. Um, I know that Elm Street is a state and a DOT street, but
In some sections.
What, through my district.
Okay.
It'd be nice if it wasn't. Um, it, it's, Elm Street is just all too
It is.
I mean, I, I like sacrifice my front end of my car every day driving up and down there. It's about as shape as it's in, but to Councilwoman Taylor's point, when we start addressing things, I get constant complaints on Elm Street about inadequate lighting. Particularly on, in my district, when you're leaving Berkeley headed, say, towards Slocum. The closer you get to Slocum, the more lighting there is because you're getting to busier sections. But that still is no reason to not have adequate lighting between there because there's a lot of completely dark areas on Slocum, uh, I'm sorry, on Elm after you leave Berkeley heading towards Slocum in that direction. That in addition to the, the pavement issue, there's, I get constant complaints about the lighting.
Right. So, so, so one other thing too, I want to mention about when I'm putting my list together. I'm also looking at future projects. Um, and on Elm Street around the William Street area, uh, there's a, there's a sewer project that we're going to be doing, and it's going to be covering that section of Elm Street. So, you know, when I'm looking at my list, I'm trying to look at future projects and, you know, what we have going on now, plus getting the best money that, you know, the best bang for our hucks. So i, i, it's, it's a lot that goes into it, you know, I'm not just grabbing streets out of the air, but, um, yeah, I just wanted to mention that too.
And just to let, uh, to carry off what, um, Councilman Boyet asked in his initial question, um, if we're not addressing the worst roads on the list, won't they get worse over more time? Or won't it cause more money to fix? I'm asking.
Yeah, well, they will, but the worst, so the worst streets have already got to be reconstructed.
So you went all the way down to the sub, the sub.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so, but, but again, what I'm trying to do is, is take care of long runs instead of doing a block here, block there, block here, block there. Just go ahead and knock out some of these longer runs and hopefully get the, the, the most out of our money. It's what I'm trying to do initially.
I mean, I understand that. I understand the logic behind, I was just thinking that some of the worst roads
Right.
that we already have, you just saying they just won't get no worse because we're, we're going to, um,
Well, you got to tear it down.
We're going to have to tear it down anyway. That's what you're saying. I got you.
Yeah, council, uh, during our agenda setting meeting, Jonathan and I went back and forth because there's specific blocks that, that I get complaints about, and I complain about myself, um, you know, constantly, and they're not on the list, and the question of why. And, and Jonathan came back exactly as this, this was just discussed. Well, Mayor, the 50-yard section that you're talking about, we can do all of Harris. Okay, I get it.
Yeah.
Now, in next year, because again, if what we budgeted this year, and we're going to get clarification and bring that back to council, but even if we don't increase that, what we're setting here is a precedent that we can do this again with the existing funds. And that is totally different than our expectations were when we first got on this council. You know, we're looking at taking what we're doing right now, replicating it next year, even if we don't increase the funding for it. And that's really, really heartening in a positive way. Um, and I, I very much, and I'll get off my soapbox too, but I really appreciate the fact that you're looking at trying to use an engineering best practice. You know, we don't have a full-on cut, uh, one-cut policy, right?
Right.
But you're looking at where you know you're going to have to cut and saying this makes sense to do block A in a different year because you know you're going to have to cut it open. The last thing you want to do is cut open fresh asphalt. So having a little bit of forecasting, knowing that there's going to be funding to be able to do things, uh, just think we're in a better spot. Um, now we do need to get clarification for council, so, yes, sir.
Can I?
Yeah, please. Go ahead.
So Mayor, if you don't mind, let me take two minutes. I went, I went back to the budget.
Okay.
Probably in real time here. I just want to read, um, if, because it's important to set up the next conversation we're going to have to.
Right, right.
Um, back in June, as we were talking about the adoption of the budget, uh, the manager wrote a man, cover memo to you all about some major modifications that were going to be in your final budget. Street resurfacing Powell bills. Do you mind if I take a minute just to kind of go through this?
I think it's, I think it's worthy to go ahead and do that, yeah.
Uh, street reconstruction fund, 100% from the Powell bill funds. This would make the new street reconstruction light item the amount of 1,216,275 dollars. Street division would be funded by the vehicle licensing fees of 785,000 and general fund of 453,000. A commitment then will be established to, for a street improvement fund for a robust street improvement program and additional future funding opportunities. This recommendation endorses funding from the state sources, the Powell bill, for street impro, improvements, not for operations. Essentially no longer funding salaries with Powell bill funds. This will, is not an easy task accomplished and I credit staff for working. Then it talks about the history of Powell bill and such like that. So there might not be much more gap we can fill. That's what was done in the budget. And that's the funding we did, we've been working off of, that was adopted budget. Not certain how we got this conver, I do kind of recall we were trying, but we never got there as far as within the context of what we were trying to do in this year's budget. We talked about how we need to get there, but that's what we got there with.
The, the total number of just over 2 million that you just recited, it would still be money that was going towards streets, is, is the people doing the work.
Right.
But it, so I think that's where.
Yep, I think so.
Councilmembers, does that answer any questions, uh, or is that just brought and want to, want to go back and look at your own notes?
Please do, but if this, yeah.
I, I do vaguely recall someone saying, and it could have been Jonathan, but that saying that if we couldn't spend that, spend a whole amount of money this year anyhow because we couldn't do the, do that much work, we just physically weren't able. But where I'm sideways at is I just thought that we were stacking it up and, and that we were still at the three, even if we didn't spend it all. That's where I'm off track at, I think.
Be happy to talk to you further about it when time comes, huh?
So, actually, Mr. Stone, come, come back up. I'll let you and Mr. Livingston guide me on this. So, uh, I believe based on this discussion that this needs to be old business at our next meeting to allow council to get any remaining questions answered. The, what specific piece will we need to have our heads wrapped around on that we will be voting on as part of the, an agenda item next meeting? Would it be the list or the plan as a whole?
So the, so if, if I may, uh, it, it would be adopting by resolution the program adopted today presented by Jonathan, which include the streets for him to go forward and put together specifications to go to bid. Um, run a bit of a timeline on that just because what our goal is to move this along, perform, get a winner bid. We think there's some benefit to try and get a winner bid on these. Um, he's starting to work on those specs already, but we would like to have you adopt the program with the streets so he can get finalized on that too.
Perfect. Well, as we discussed in our, our agenda meeting, we, it has been our habit, our culture. We present things to council one meeting and then allow them to digest, and then we, uh, have the vote on it in a subsequent meeting. So having it as old business at the October 6 meeting, uh, would accomplish that and allow a proper resolution to be in front of council so we know exactly what we're voting on.
And we're available between now and then, talk about budget, further solve that riddle and/or talk about this conversation about the lists and streets and if we got it right or not.
Mr. Livingston, anything? Yes, sir.
Uh, just my last comment is, I can't disagree with the list and how he, he, he put it together, so I'm, I'm not saying that. But going in the future, if we're trying to put long stretches together and try to get the most bang for our buck, there are going to be some streets that are last, that are absolutely the worst, that our citizens are still driving on. So I just want to make sure that we're not, you, you know what I'm saying, we get some kind of happy balance to, even though we're trying to do lo, large stretches, you know, to take care of those roads that our citizens are driving on that are, are just, just need to be done. Because some of them could end up being last if we keep looking for longer stretches. And I just want us to see if we can just have a, have a balance in there.
I think, I think we're interested also in how this all works. I mean, we're, we're entering a little bit new phase, right? So, um, we're hoping all five of these hit the target. They really benefit. We're going to continue rating our streets every other year just to see those improvements or degregations as we leave them and don't touch them. Uh, but one of these might not be great, right? And we're going to say, let's roll those back and do something else more strategy wise. So Jonathan is very interested in trying to touch all these because these are the common standard practices most communities do to attack their streets and maintain the condition of their streets. So, um, these are, this is a menu of a lot of items, and they may be rebalanced in the future as we look at how effective they are and what they do to our streets.
I'd just like to say, Mayor, in closing it out, this is a comprehensive approach that we're looking at, street maintenance. A program that looks at, you know, the critical needs of the city, and it's just step one. You know, it's not a ton of money that we're putting towards it this time. But this next phase, we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about how we can put more money to it. Because I know that that's going to be something you're interested in doing because we're playing, you know, a lot of catch-up here. And, you know, even if we put the 3 million towards it, you know, or 3.3 to, to, to keep it on par level, we're still going to be following, uh, close to falling behind. So we have to step up our efforts here. And so I think we're doing the right thing by just getting it moving forward and getting the program going. And that's kind of what we're looking at doing tonight. There's going to be some things we're going to have to work out. There's going to be some, you know, probably some, maybe hopefully not any major missteps, but we're going to be learning a few things when we go through the bidding process on this. But this will be a good first start for us, and I think coming up as next session, we're going to see how we can put some more money towards it if, if that's the desire of the council.
All right. So item 8 dot 1, at least this first part of it, which is the pavement preservation list and the, uh, pavement preservation plan, uh, that we will see as a resolution, uh, under old business at our next agenda so that we can discuss that. If you'll allow, give us just one second. We've now been going for approximately an hour and a half, and I try to always give nature breaks at that 90-minute mark. So what we're going to do is have a recess until 7 o'clock, just to allow for quick nature breaks. breaks. Counsel, everyone's back in place. Mr. Livingston, if you'd like to introduce?
Yeah, thank you. We have Mitch here from Davenport who's going to go over his presentation. We've had several discussions with him, not only, you know, talking about our capital improvement program, but also about our road repaving program. And obviously, you know, with what we've got with Powell bill, which 1.2 million, we've got 30 million-plus worth of road resurfacing needs, it's not going to get us to where we need, and we're behind the eight ball on some of our resurfacing initiatives within the city. So we've got to determine a way ahead to provide more financing towards roads. And so there's a couple of different options there, and he'll talk about some. And we've also got Catherine here that can help us answer some questions, too, if we need to. But for the most part, he's going to tell us some options that we have, including things such as geo-bonds and tools such as that to get larger sums of money to do more intensive, larger-scale projects throughout the city.
Great. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for having me this evening. As Jonathan said, the projects that are being done this year, that's kind of step one. We're here, a little informational, how can we think about bridging the gap between what you've got funded right now, which, realize, there's a little bit in question, but go with the 1.2 million of Powell bill funds is what I'll focus on tonight. The 1.2 million of Powell bill funds versus the recommended 3.2 million, what are some of the options that you all could consider to help close that gap a little bit? I don't know if, I just turned it on and off. Is there a keyboard?
You have to point it at us first before it works.
I don't want to shoot the laser, y'all. Did we pass these out? I'll keep rolling while we, we're having technical issues. Y'all have your, y'all have hard copies if I'm technically taking them here. The first page, Page 2, just kind of goes back to the original study. I'm not going to go through this in detail, y'all have been talking about this a lot, but the bottom line is 1.2 million of Powell bill funds versus 3.2 million of annual needs over the next 10 years. That's where we get to the 32 million total needs, 3.2 per year fiscal year '27 to '36. What are some of our options for funding that?
You can see next slide.
Oh, I got it. Works, there we go. So, we have looked at two scenarios. In both scenarios, we're going to continue with the program that you're working on this year, 1.2 million of Powell bill paying cash towards projects, right? You're going to have some projects that may or may not be capital expenditures in the street improvements, so we're going to set aside the cash from the Powell bill to fund street projects. That leaves a gap of $20 million, right? 1.2 million a year for 10 years is $12 million of cash funding. And then there's a $20 million gap to get to the total of 32 million. In Scenario 1, we're going to look at additional pay-as-you-go cash-funded expenditures to get to that gap. And then in Scenario 2, we'll introduce the idea of financing the gap and spreading that out. We're going to assume that you pay it back over a 10-year period of time for the financing, kind of aligning with the improvement of streets, right? They deteriorate over time, so we don't want to finance them over a really long period, and you have to redo those streets before you're done paying off the financing for the original improvements. So we're going to keep it to 10 years, and we're going to, in this case, we're assuming geo-bond funding, but there are other financing options that you could consider. So, that didn't show up very well. I'm sorry, it looks better in your books. But, so Scenario 1, essentially, Column B, pay-as-you-go cash funding. This means you got to come up with the 3.2 million every single year to cover that funding scenario. Scenario 2, where we do a financing, we are looking at continuing the 1.2 million annually of the cash funding from Powell bill, and then every other year, financing 4 million of improvements. This gives you a chunk of money upfront to be able to go and work through various projects over a two-year period of time, expend those, and come back and do it again. You do that a total of five times to get to the total of $20 million. So you can see the schedule here, Column C, doesn't show up very well on the screen, but in your books, we're looking at borrowing in fiscal year '27, '29, '31, '33, and '35 at $4 million each. That's covering two years of $2 million per year. And that's going to help you, A, get started on a larger amount of projects earlier, as well as kind of spread out the impact of having to fund those dollars. So, what does that mean from a cash flow perspective? Let's look at Scenario 1, Column B, where we're funding 3.2 million dollars a year in cash. We know you've got the 1.2 million of Powell bill funding, so that's a difference of $2 million that you need to cover starting in year 1. We've equated that to the number of pennies on your tax rate for perspective, but essentially, this is saying, starting in fiscal year '27, if you wanted to pay cash for 3.2 million a year, you've got to come up with an additional $2 million. Scenario, or Column D, is where we layer in those financings. Now, I will, I will point out, and try not to shoot people in the eye with a laser, Line 8 is interest, right? So when we do a financing, we're assuming a 5% interest rate. That's a little high in today's market, but we try to be conservative on something we can deliver. You will have additional payments of interest that you have to cover. So to get the $20 million, over time, we do have to pay about $5.5 million of interest. So, total cost of the financing is a little over $25 million when you factor in the interest. However, what it does is it spreads out the need to come up with additional dollars. So Column D shows you, under our assumptions, there would be no additional money on top of the 1.2 million of Powell bill that you would have to come up with in fiscal year '27. Starting in '28, you would have to come up with another $600,000, because we borrowed $4 million to get, we borrowed $4 million, but the payments are spread out over 10 years. So you only have to come up with $600,000 starting in 2028. And you can see that, those additional dollars that you have to come up with every year as we issue additional debt, those start to rise. And so you get to the, about a little over $2 million shortfall out in 2034 is by the time you hit that $2 million mark. So it's allowing you to continue funding this street program, but increase the amount you're having to allocate incrementally over time to get there. Allows for your budget to grow, for you to put measures in place to get there over time. And so Column E is just equating those additional dollars you need to come up with to an equivalent tax rate in the future. So if you waited to come up with those dollars over time, what is the equivalent tax rate that you would have to come up with? If you wanted to look at doing something earlier, one time in fiscal year '27 or '28, the equivalent numbers of pennies to generate those additional dollars in Column D would be a lower amount, 3.3 to 3.7 pennies if you do it upfront. And this is kind of like Councilmember Boyett said earlier, setting money aside. You're getting money a little earlier, you're putting it in the bank, you're establishing a reserve to help offset future costs. And that lowers the overall budgetary impact by doing it sooner. So let me pause there. That's a lot of information, I went pretty quickly. So, see if there are any questions or folks are following before I move on here.
Counsel, any comments or questions on the first five pages? Keep it going.
Okay. So, if you do want to consider further, Scenario 2, where you look at this financing approach, do need to be aware that in North Carolina, whenever we do a financing, most financings, you are going to have to get approval from the local government commission. And as part of that, they will want to understand that you're, what the amount that you're borrowing is adequate, but not excessive, to fund the projects. Like you all were saying earlier, can we take on and can we manage this level of projects? Well, that's part of what the local government commission looks at as part of their approval. They want to know that you're able to manage those dollars and have those dollars bid. So this is something, regardless of financing approach, we will have to go through the local government commission for that approval. In terms of options, right, we've kind of looked at two here, pay-as-you-go capital funding and debt financing. Obviously, the first one on here, grants, if we can get money from the state or the federal government that you all don't have to come up with, great, but those dollars are not always available. You have to qualify for them and can't count on that always. So the cash funding is the pay-as-you-go capital. The last several items are options to finance these. And again, we focused on general obligation bonds. What does that mean? That is a pledge of the full faith, credit, taxing power of the city. That is the most secure, the lowest interest cost that you can get on a borrowing is a general obligation bond. It does require a voter referendum, so it goes to the voters, and if approved, you have the authority to go out and issue these general obligation bonds. If it doesn't pass a referendum, you do not have the authority to do that. Another common financing technique in North Carolina is referred to as installment financing contracts or limited obligation bonds. This is a pledge of an asset. And the city has utilized this a lot in the past, City Hall installment financing contract, pledge of City Hall, a mortgage on City Hall, right? So lenders, under this approach, are looking for good, essential governmental assets because that's their security. They have a mortgage on it, right? You know, you go out to get a personal mortgage, they prefer to get your primary home, not a rental home or a vacation home or whatever. They want to have the house that you live in first and foremost, kind of the same sense. They want City Hall, they want the police station. Not to say you can't do an installment financing for streets, but not a lot of banks are excited about having a mortgage on asphalt, right? So it's a little more difficult. General obligation bonds are a very common approach to funding streets throughout the state. state. So, going to kind of walk you through a little bit what that would entail if you did want to do a general obligation bond referendum for streets. Couple things to be aware of. In terms of timing, it must be held at a citywide election, right? Citywide, has to be, has to vote, everybody has a chance to go to the ballot. The process to get to a referendum takes about six months. There's some legal actions that you have to do, some notice periods. We've laid all that out for you. Once the vote takes place, if it is approved, the geo-bonds are authorized for a seven-year period of time, and then you all have an option, the ability, to extend it for another three years for a total of 10 years. That extension would require your approval and local government commission approval, but it can go out to a 10-year period of time. At the initial referendum, ideally, like to see that there's a plan to get things funded over the seven-year period, which is how we laid out our original scenario two. When it goes to the ballot, there are four things under the current legislation that have to go on the ballot question. The purpose of the bonds, streets and sidewalks, the amount of the bonds, in this case, up to $20 million, but also the cumulative cost, principal plus interest, estimated interest over the life of the bonds, and the property tax liability, or the cost to the citizen if the, if the general obligation bond is approved. Those last two are new initiatives since the city's last referendum. That is a new ballot question, component to the ballot question. And kind of just for perspective here, did a side-by-side comparison. Last time you voted, general obligation bonds was on the left, pretty simple, this amount for this purpose. You can see the expanded question on the right, this amount for this purpose, plus the estimated interest cost, plus the property tax liability. So, as I said earlier, the process for holding a referendum is, give or take, six months, a little longer. What we've laid out here for you is a sample calendar to get to a November 2026 referendum, if that, if you chose to do that route. And what that would mean is kind of, right now, getting the process started, thinking about what amount you would want to put on, what are the impacts, starting to quantify some of those things for you, so you can establish, what do we want to put on the ballot, if anything? By May of '26, roughly, May of 2026, is where you would need to finalize your, your amount that you're putting on the ballot and the question that you're putting on the ballot. I think, you know, for you all here specifically, streets and sidewalks would be the broad You all get to choose, you could put specific streets and specific sidewalks on the ballot, but if you do that, those are the only streets, only sidewalks that you could spend money on from that authorized geo-bond. So, typically, and particularly for streets and sidewalks, it's generally pretty broad. So, you would finalize that amount. Summer timeframe, you would go through your various legal steps that you would have to go through, and council, and bond council will walk you through all that. Getting to the November 2026 referendum, if that's approved, you, there are some actions, official canvas, you all voting to accept the results, and then, then we go to the local government commission for their approval after the vote. Again, that's a little different than the last referendum process you went through. Previously, the local government commission approved before the referendum. Now, it's after. So, it adds a little bit of time to the process. For a November vote, if things really came together, you're looking at spring of 2027, before you would be in a position to do that first issuance. And that's important, because if the vote is approved, it doesn't necessarily mean you have the money in the bank, right? If you were to put 20 million of general obligation bonds on the ballot, they are approved, you have the authorization to issue 20 million of general obligation bonds. You do not have the dollars to spend at that point. There is an issuance process that you have to go through, and you get to determine how much you want to issue, and you can do multiple issues. You don't have to do it all at one time, which is how we've laid it out in this analysis. And then the expiration would be November of '33. So, that initial seven years would take you to November of '33. If you, if you had some authorization remaining, you could choose to extend it to November of '36, if you want to. Little bit of perspective statewide on the results of general obligation bond referenda. Looking back over the last five years, there has been a total, column B, of 101 general obligation bond questions. 92 have passed, nine have failed, right? So, pretty good passage rate, 91% passage rate over the last five years for all general obligation bond questions. There has been a slight decline in the average passage rate over the last several years. Lot of factors can go into that, one of which may be the statutory question, inflation, budgets, et cetera, purposes that have been voted, but overall, last five years, pretty good passage rate. We have seen that decline a little bit over the last year, year and a half. Of the 101 questions, there have not been 101 cities or counties in the state that have put general obligation bonds on the ballot. Many have put several questions on the same ballot or multiple ballots. So, it's been a total of 56 total cities or counties that have voted general obligation bonds, and only seven of those units have had failed questions. So, just thought that would be helpful perspective. We do have, on the next page, I won't go through all this tonight, but just for your perspective, the last November referenda, what units had questions, what they were for, the amounts, and whether they passed or failed. This may be perspective for you all as you're thinking about it. And then, the remainder of this presentation addresses the topic that I mentioned earlier. Once you have the authorization, you don't have the money in the bank. You have to choose to go out and issue the bonds. And when you get to that point, you'll have several different options that you can look at, whether it's going to a bank, you've done that approach in the past, or whether it's selling bonds in the capital markets, municipal bonds, in the public markets, you all have done that as well in the past. So, you will have options, and that process, kind of start to finish, once you decide to issue bonds, takes, give or take, 15 weeks before you have the actual money in the bank. So, for that first issue, if it was approved in November of '26, go through, get LGC approval following the positive vote, then you would have about a 15-week period of time taking you into the spring of 2027, before you would have the money in the bank to start spending on the actual projects. So, that, again, informational for you all tonight to start thinking about ways that you could potentially start to fill any gap that may exist in this program, and certainly happy to answer questions for you all now and in the future as you continue deliberating on it.
Counsel, any comments or questions? Obviously, we're not putting this to a vote this evening by any stretch of the imagination, but are there initial reactions or comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
On and over humor, we could do installment financing and then put the existing public safety complex up for collateral. I just had to put that up.
Thanks for that. Are there any constructive comments?
Moving right along. So, it seems to me that the city is in an excellent debt position, because we hadn't borrowed any money in for so long because of the woes of the, the audits being behind and all that. It seems to me that installment financing would be, it certainly would be my preference on the way forward if we could not figure out pay-go. Pay-go and saving $5,000 would certainly be okay, but if it had to be that we're going to finance it, I would be interested, and we don't have to do that now, it can be a certain, a future conversation, but I would be interested in knowing what the staff thought, their opinion was of installment versus doing geo, because obviously, we're blessed with Matt and Kelly and Catherine that are experts, and I'm just the guy that got elected. I, I, I think that if someone said, well, that's, you know, we should do it this way, I'm going to follow what's recommended, but it just seems to me that I would rather see pay-go or installment financing instead of geo. Just a thought.
Counsel, any other thoughts, comments? I'll offer this piece of advice, hold on to this packet, because this will be one of those that we have to refer back to a lot over the next few weeks and few months as we decide what we want to do, and if we want to do anything. But, it is already in slip at the very, at the very top of the meeting when I said budget, because we're already talking about budget matters, because it's, we've got to look at. So, counsel, if there's nothing else, then I'll allow our speaker to, to sit down, and we will file these away. But again, counsel, these are going to be important documents, so hold on to them, because I'm confident they will come back up for conversation at some point in the future in some way. Thank you. All right. Speaking of things that are expensive, item 8.2, Mr. Livingston, if you'd talk about our next thing that needs money.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, for some time now, we've been doing an evaluation of the public safety centers, as you're aware of, and generally has some serious issues, namely, with the structural issues with the building and some, which have led to a lot of HVAC issues, which has also led to some mold issues that we've had, particularly talking about Station 1. So, we went and we asked a building consultant to take a look at it. We went and did the RFQs and did select a building consultant, and Kelly has been running that process for us, and I'll let him introduce where we're at right now and the presenter tonight.
Mayor and counsel, part two of our night of big items. As Mayor Livingston talked about, really, this has been kind of coming forward for a while, but if you remember summer of '23, when Station 1 had to kind of close down for a moment, and a lot of mold and mildew we had to address, and that kind of was your genesis of saying, what do we need to do? And so, this effort is coming forward as to, what do we need to do, if anything we can do, to fix and maintain our current system, but also, look if there's anything that we want to do potentially for a new facility, if we determine that our better investment is in that versus trying to put big money into maintaining our existing facility. So, tonight, we're going to bring forward two primary consultants we've been using. Ben Lewis of Kairos is going to give you an overview of the status of the current HVAC, which is the primary problem that's caused by the building, too, and you'll hear about that, in the current existing facilities. He'll talk about, and very briefly, the conditions exist within the HVAC system. And then the second part, we'll bring in Andy Speck, who will be talking about what we did as a group, and let me take a moment on that. The group, as you see back there, all that group back there have been working about monthly on this for about nine months, is that right, guys? About nine, 10 months on this issue. They're your resources, they're your team, who kind of have lived in that existing facility now, but also have brought forward what they believe are what some needs for a modern-day facility if we choose to go that route. So, you're going to hear that from Andy, what that result was, what that looks like, and at the end of the night tonight, it's one of those, again, take the information, we'll talk about it further, but we just want to get you some results tonight, what we've been working on for about the last 10 months. So, with that, Ben?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for your time to be here. I want to go through a few PowerPoint slides for you guys. Great, great briefing on the, on the current status. Very nice. I'm with Kairos Project Group. We are a consulting engineering firm located up in Raleigh. We specialize in building design for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems in buildings. And before I touch on that next point, I want to emphasize, as I go through this, very briefly, the heartbeat of a building is, is a lot in the HVAC system, indoor air quality and things like that. And as a part of that goes, that system is supported by electrical systems and other things, but most importantly, is the integrity of the building envelope. And you'll hear me mention that in a moment. Building envelope, roof, walls, floor, that keep the outside out and the inside in. So, the areas we surveyed in the, in the facility were all the buildings on the campus, the, we went into each mechanical room, went into interstitial spaces, which interstitial spaces, like in this room, would be above the ductwork, above the ceiling, in between, and below the roof, so the mechanical area where the air moves, and all occupied areas. The systems that were surveyed, in our world, we talk about HVAC systems have two different sides. There's the air-moving side, that you feel the air, and then there's the water side, which is how heating and cooling is moved from mechanical rooms to the HVAC system. So, in our world, two different sides. Question?
Touch on that just, just for a second. A standard, a standard house HVAC, you're looking at a very different system than the boiler and chiller system we have here. Do you mind just 30 seconds or less explaining what exactly it is that we have over there?
No, absolutely not. So, in that facility, you have, there's an air side and a water side. They work together to condition a building from a cooling standpoint in the summer and from heating in the winter. So, what happens is, in the summertime, you need to cool the air, the air passes by a, by a coil. The chilled water system is cooling water off on the side, distributes water to that coil, air blows across the coil and cools it. The reverse of that happens in the winter. So, in the wintertime, you need heat, that same coil then receives hot water from a boiler that's made over here, recirculates, and the air blows across that coil to heat it. So, in our world, that's why we consider that two different sides. There's an air side, which involves the distribution of the heater or cooled air, and then on the water side is how you move the heat or the cooling to the air.
Thank you.
Clear?
Yeah.
Okay. Good question. So, a big point of this, so we, we did a very intricate health assessment of your HVAC system. And through our assessment, through visiting these areas on the campus, there's one thing that is very important to note, and is that the building envelope is in a very unhealthy condition, from the standpoint of allowing the outside in. So, there's, there's cracks and crevices around windows, water can get in, and water, water is very, very, very unhealthy. Water vapor is very, very unhealthy for a building, for interior spaces. It propagates all the things, mold, and indoor air quality suffers and things like that. So, building envelope is, if I could put that in all caps, as big as a TV, is a very, very, very important piece of that. So, as we go forward, we're talking HVAC, but just keep that in mind, that building envelope is very, very important. Okay, so, our findings, we took, we had two engineers and an intern that we went through the facility. We were, had support from all the staff back here, great group of folks. So, the facility has some age on it, from back in the 70s, if I remember just correctly. And so, when you, when you go, when you ask systems to run that long, this is not, the statements I'm about to make are not specific to your facility, it's specific to any facility. So, systems have a lifespan, much like a car. So, if you take care of a car as best you can, it will eventually create, have an issue. You'll have a little breakdown on you. If you, if you've ever owned a car you never took care of, it lasted longer than the car you took the best care of. All those anomalies happen in building systems. So, existing chill water and heating hot water piping, a lot of that, that carries that water side from the HVAC. It is so old, it has reached the end of its service life. So, that piping needs to be replaced, and signs of that are when there needs to be a repair on that system. The, you will be working on the, on the piping itself with tools, and something will happen, a pipe will literally break nearby where you're doing it, just by putting the pressure on the piping of taking an nutter or a bolus, things like that. And also, what happens is on the inside of the piping, what's happening are you're getting particulate matter, so it's rust falling off the piping that goes and gets into those areas where we don't want to have that, and it reduces the efficiency of the system. So, as the water- So as the water seems to be moving appropriately, it's, it's not flowing through all the channels and things and the equipment that it needs to, because the equipment has been plugged with, with that rust. So needs to be, we made a statement there also, particular insulation values. And I want to touch, touch on insulation values of specifically cold surfaces such as ductwork or chilled water piping. What happens is, is as, as insulation ages, if you walk on it or you're, you're working around it and it gets compressed, insulation has R values that are, are affected when that insulation is, changes shape or anything like that, or it gets wet. So once you get into a situation where water vapor or condensation starts compromising your insulation, it cannot be fixed, it has to be replaced. So that's why I make a statement there about a minimum insulation value. And as I've talked with, with the team, think of the summertime with a cold drink in your hand outside. That's what's happening with ductwork and, and piping with poor insulation, where you get the condensation on the drink. Okay, so these will be replaced. Each coil it serves, and there's many of those in there, should be properly flushed and reviewed to make sure when that piping is replaced, that we don't have that leftover corrosion. Number two, existing H V A C duct supply duct replacement. So the, as the building has aged and as we have encountered indoor air quality issues and all the different measures you guys have, are aware of, you can't, you can't take old ductwork out and put new ductwork in and then expect it to perform adequately whenever the problem of the building envelope is still there. Because you're going to get the same environmental deficiencies into that new ductwork that's in the existing ductwork now. So you can't do one to fix the other. This is unfortunately a systemic overhaul of, of the, of more than just the H V A system, which is what the footnote was at the very beginning. Again, note on, on just insulation, that's important as we're cooling that building down. And there's some areas where it need to be cooler than other areas. And as you run, as the building gets cooler and cooler, it's nice and cool in here. It requires more insulation to prevent the mold propagation and water vapor that comes as you run a building cooler and cooler. Three, there's plenum is the area where air is moving above the, in the interstitial space that is recirculating in the H V A C system. So an H V A C system takes air from the building, cools it or heats it, and puts it back in the building. And it just recirculates like that. That facility currently does not have returned ductwork. That's, that's a pulling air out of this room and putting it back in this room. All the, all of the rooms in the building communicate to above the ceiling. And then that air just gets pulled back in and distributed wherever. What that does is creates a problem where the building, we use the word communicate, meaning that space one, room one, is connected to room two, is connected to room three, just like that door is open. So this room is connected to that hallway. The air can move freely. So part of the, part of the difficulty in maintaining indoor air quality is when you can't, I can't shut that door. So if I have a problem in here, I can't keep it out of there. That's airflow moves just like so. If we're trying to secretly communicate in here and someone in the hallway not hear us, we would shut the door. Air works exactly the same way. So we can't move, we can't prevent it from here to there. The, as part of the converting that open plenum to ducted plenums, meaning we're controlling where we're moving the air. Gravity ventilators are in the building. And a gravity ventilator simply just relieves the building pressure. So as we bring air in, we have to obviously have a place for it to go. So I know this sounds really, this sounds horribly inefficient, but this is proper building methodology. We want to push the inside air out. So we cool it or heat it, and when we have proper humidity levels, we want to push that out. So what happens, you open a door, you walk out to the street, conditioned air moves out. And so what our building is doing is, is bringing outside air in. And that's okay if we bring outside, outside air in through the H V A C system, because it's made to condition that before it puts it in a living space. So in the gravity ventilator situation, currently, there's no, there's no way to isolate that when, whenever the H V A C system says, okay, the building's happy, I need to stop and rest for a minute. It continues to let outside air come in. That's a big, that's a big piece of outdoor air coming in. Back to water vapor is where we're getting from the outside. H V A C systems can control water vapor if it can recirculate it and get it by that cooling coil. Clear? Questions? I'm saying, I know I'm saying a lot, okay. And I'll have a question time at the end, too. Yeah, okay. Addition of dehumidifiers in these, in the ductwork, we just need to add electric dehumidifiers to get out water vapor. And building E, there is an existing rooftop unit that needs to be addressed to modulate its air input and output into the building as the building requires it. Currently, it just runs at constant speed. And building C, the kitchen hood makeup air system, the commercial kitchen needs to have makeup air coming from dehumidified source, not just pulling in from anywhere it can get. And B A S programming changes, B A S building automation system. That's the supervisory system of the building. It just needs to go through and have all the H V A C systems work together, all the fans in there working together. And as you can see a list, there's multiple relief fans and multiple air handlers that need to work together. So when, when fan one says I'm happy, and that means fan two turns off, it needs to do that. And again, that's the note on H V A C remedy alone will not completely resolve these issues. Back to building envelope, last, last statement. The most important piece of a building, we take buildings for granted because we're in them every day. They are, they, they work together in harmony with a lot of systems and a lot of pieces. And we can't pick one and pick three and pick seven and hope that we resolve all the issues. It is a, it's a, unfortunately, is, it's a holistic. It's just like taking a human into surgery. You have to monitor all the systems to fix the one problem. I think that's the last slide. Questions?
Counsel, any questions on that? I have a feeling you just learned more about the mechanical systems. No, it's necessary, because this council especially, you know, we want to know what it is that we're talking about. We want to know what it is that we're voting on and the why, because these are expensive things. And it's a lot of people's money that's being used to, to make these adjustments, whatever they happen to be. So I don't think anyone here minds you giving some detail. Counsel, any other comments or questions right now? Well, let's move into next. Sir, thank you.
All right, good evening. Let's see if I'm qualified to run this. Oh, good start.
Evening, I'm Andy Speck of Boba Construction. And joining us online is Jimmy Edwards, Principal of Davis Kane Architects, our design partner on this project. The objective for this first phase of the work was to develop a recommendation on how much land would be required should we build a new public safety facility? And some, what would the approximate cost would be? So that's, you have a full detailed report. I'm going to try to give you a very condensed version of that here in about ten minutes. But please stop me should you have questions. Our team was chosen through a qualification-based selection process to assist the city with the assessing and looking at new public safety centers. We were asked as part of our interview process to offer, provide our professional opinions on the, the existing facility. So we toured the facility in December of twenty-three. We reviewed the building drawings that were available to us and plus a handful of engineering reports commissioned by the city. There are very obvious indications the building is settling, inside and outside the building. A geotechnical report put together by Terricon indicates the soil is suitable for supporting the building. But there's any number of reasons why it might be settling. They're all educated guesses at best. But correcting the problem would require a combination of installing piers and grout under the foundation and the floor slabs, which means that you're going into the building, ripping your floors out, ripping your slabs out, fixing it, and then replacing it. We've got building cracks in both the, okay, I don't want to blind anybody. But the bottom left-hand corner there, that, that is very representative throughout the building. That is crack in the concrete masonry block unit, units. The concern with that is that is a structural element. That's a part of the building structure. The brick veneers, you can see is cracking as well, it's pretty representative around the structure. But it could represent a falling hazard, as, as kind of shown there in the bottom right-hand corner with the brick over the window. I won't go into it a lot. We've talked about building envelope. The thermal envelope is shot, it's not sufficient, and it's compromised, excuse me, by the cracking, which is getting additional moisture in the building. And of course, recall Ben's comments, you gotta fix the building envelope if you're going to fix the building, period. So you can't just fix the H V A C system alone. Couple of things here, the picture on the far right, you can see the blistering of the paint on the wall. That is a symbol of a wet concrete masonry block unit. And we talked about, Ben, again, went into a lot more detail than I ever could on the mechanical system and the mold and mildew. But this is just to say, we, we observed a lot of mold and mildew throughout the building as well. The building has some plumbing issues. I'll start with the, the two pictures of the floor drains. You can see that the floor slab has settled, and the drain is actually higher than the rest of the floor. So that's actually not a very effective drain at that point. You also have water hammering in the building. And that, it's, it's just a loud, when a valve closes too quickly, it's just a really loud pinging sound. But that can loosen fittings, destroy pipes, even cause ruptures. And before I move on, just one comment here. The, the space allocated to the police and the fire department right now just is not adequate to meet their current needs. So that, that, that's part of the, the struggle as you figure out how to go forward. Hey, I need to fix that. I will point out, the square footage is in your report for what's needed. Even, even on this slide, they are not correct. You'll see the correct square footages later on. So our objective in this phase of the project was to, again, develop the ROM pricing, rough order of magnitude pricing and land requirements. So in order to do that, we needed to go through some space programming analysis, to figure out how much space they need. Once we have that, we can figure out how much land is required for the building. And then from there, we can figure out what is the rough order of magnitude cost. And we analyze each department independently, and then we combine them together as if we were doing a one public safety center. So about this time last year, we took the leadership of the, of fire and police departments and we did some benchmarking tours. Those are the six facilities we went to visit. Gathering intelligence on what's working in those facilities or what those owners would do differently. That helped inspire and accelerate and focus the process of space needs analysis. This is the team that was involved in our project over that nine to ten, eleven month process. We met twice a month, we got feedback on our progress each time. We initially put together that space needs analysis, room by room, space by space. Davis Kane, our design partners, assigned square footages to that. The next step then is to put together conceptual floor plans to kind of come up with the, the final square footages. So the standalone fire station was a one and a half story building at about thirty-seven thousand square feet in total. Now, keep in mind, we don't have a parcel of land in mind. So the, the, the shape of the land will, will very much influence the shape of your building. However, we do have a general understanding of the big picture, which is programming and adjacencies. By adjacencies, I mean some people or functions need to be close to each other in the building to keep it efficient. So we tried to take that into account as we did this. We then took this floor plan and shared it with our site design partner, C L H Design, who went through a similar process on the outside, focusing on property setbacks required, parking, drive aisles, outdoor storage, and amenities. For the fire station, they recommended a parcel size of five and a half to eight acres. And that's the half to the second floor on the fire station bunk rooms. Excuse me. So the, for the police station, the standalone police station, just under fifty-three thousand square feet, the recommended parcel size was six to eight acres. Then once we had the, the two standalone buildings figured out, we kind of mashed them together and figured out what kind of common spaces we could get some efficiencies out of. And this would be the, a combined public safety facility at about eighty-seven thousand square feet and would need nine to twelve acres of land. Comparatively, nine to twelve acres. Comparatively speaking, if you were to build the two standalone buildings, you're looking at ninety-one thousand square feet and about eighteen acres of land. That's the second floor of the public safety center. So to kind of wrap this up, the current facility doesn't meet the square, you know, the space needs of the current, the current space needs of the police or fire departments. And the building itself is beyond its useful life. We beat that horse pretty good. The standalone fire station, about thirty-seven thousand square feet, there's the five and a half to eight acres. Budget-wise, you can look at twenty-five point six to thirty-one point one million dollars in current day dollars for that project. And we would project about two and a half years of design and construction using the design, build, project delivery method, which is what we do.
You said twenty-five to thirty mil for the, the cost?
Yes.
If it was done as a standalone fire?
If it was done as a standalone building right now.
Okay, so we're up from twenty, I guess, just because of the continued inflation and rise of construction costs? I remember twenty being the round number a couple of years ago.
Well, I'll tell you what, and there's a section, my disclaimer section here. But we came up with these numbers looking at comparable projects. So it's not a specific estimate on a project. This is kind of what we see for similar stuff.
Thank you.
So the police station, budget-wise, it's a little bigger, so twenty-eight point eight to thirty-five point two. Similar timeframe, two and a half years of design and construction. And then, of course, the combined public safety center, fifty-one point seven to sixty-five. It's a bigger building, it's going to take a little longer. Probably the best we can do is three years of design and construction. So as you're absorbing all that, a few things, and here's my disclaimers. So at this stage of development, site costs are the most difficult to project. So we've used a cost range of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per disturbed acre on the low end, up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the high end. Depending on the parcel of land, it could be higher or lower. So that, that's a big swing. As I mentioned, this cost is based upon comparable projects, not necessarily a, a specific estimate. We don't have materials, structural systems, finishes, H V A C systems figured out. The other thing I'll point out is, we didn't figure out where's the, the low end? How low could you go? What's the minimum square footage that we could put together that would meet the needs for the, you know, their needs? So that is something that, that could be a follow-up step or something like that. The intent of this information is just to help you make some business decisions going forward. You know, we didn't, we didn't spend any time trying to figure out minimum square footages. But we understand budgets are not infinite, so double negative there. So if, if the direction was, we want a combined public safety center, but we only have forty thousand, forty million dollars, excuse me, to do that with, we can help figure that out. That's a part of the design build process that's really strong in working towards a specific budget. So your next steps, obviously, you've got, you gotta, you gotta work on this, figure out what you want to do, determine your availability of funding and priorities of construction, find suitable property if you're going to build, maintain engagement with us, we can help you assess sites, let you know whether they're, they're good or bad or whether they'll work for your project. And then once priorities have been established and properties acquired, we'll circle back around to the program and, and make that fit your budget and your priorities. Questions?
Counsel, comments, questions? Yes, sir?
Has the study come back yet that, that was being worked on? That's going to tell us the general area that we think that this combined facility needs to be? I know there was a study ongoing a while back for that.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening.
We have done some preliminary studies using N C State. They were doing a study they've helped law enforcement with. And we do have some ideas where would, where would be best for us. But finding that many acres where is perfect is very difficult right now. There are some other options that we can do. Generally speaking, a little bit north and west from our current location is where we need to be. Generally speaking, a little bit north and west from our current location is where we need to be for the fireside, for our response plan to make sure we do our four minutes response time. I know that's not a lot, but it's, I don't want to give you a set area because then if you fixate on that set area and we don't have 12 acres to purchase there. So that moving west is really where we need to be, just a little bit. No, it's not gonna help with the Rosewood area. That's not gonna correct that issue either. It's just kind of get us aligned to where we need to be with our current response model that we use.
Following up on that, if I may. So counsel, as you're digesting this, remember that these are not currently emergent situations, but they are very important situations. We also have other fire stations and the physical space needs rework. Station at the corner of Pecetown and William only has a single restroom and a single bunker.
That's correct, sir.
As everyone is aware, ladies are in the fire service now and we want more of them.
Hello.
And so we gotta make sure that we get that one reworked and correct.
Yes.
We gotta look at some of the other stations as well that need rework and maintenance. So part of the reason for this whole conversation is being able to kind of put it on everybody's radar that we've gotta make some hard decisions about things that come out of the general fund. Utility fund is different. Water treatment plant is different. This is general fund obligation stuff. We gotta look at roads. We gotta look at at least one fire department. We gotta look at the police station. And I didn't mean to take over.
No, no, you're fine. I'm just stepping away.
No, you're fine.
Just easing back.
No, I've done that before. But there are several very large ticket items that we're gonna have to look at. Do we tackle them all at once? They're all come and due. But how do we balance that in next year's budget? Which is why we're getting it in front of the councils early and as quickly as possible. Do you have anything else that you would like to add? If you could reorient your different buildings right now, I know we've, you and I have discussed before, the one on Pecetown and William probably would not go back in that exact location, especially if you could move one to where its ideal location would be. Can you speak to where you would really like to be?
That is correct. Before this issue with headquarters came up, I was working on Station 3, William and Pecetown Road and adjusting it. When we had that study down, done, what they found was the strip up Way Memorial Drive that includes the hospital and the college. We are not in one of our, what we call our one and a half mile road responses. So ideally, to move Station 3, Country Day Road, somewhere around that area. And then by shifting the headquarters or public safety complex up a little north and a little bit to the west, we better place our stations to make sure that we have a better encompassing response plan for the city.
So a lot of conversations, you know, do we look at doing it as a joint construction project? Do we look at doing dedicated fire, dedicated police? All of this is preliminary. I'll stop talking so y'all can have the floor back to ask questions. Ms. Protem, I believe I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure that I understand. The cost that you, the estimated cost that you gave us, you were saying that it does not include the HVAC? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, no, no, it does. It does. We just don't have anything specific to price. We're looking at whole building costs of similar type buildings.
All right.
Do we have a rough estimate of what repairs at the existing location would look like?
We do not. We do not. That would be pretty comprehensive. And of course, how you would develop that one thing, we, first question is the general contractor we'd ask is, is there gonna be anybody in the building? You know, so that right there is a huge question. If you're trying to work around people, that's a big money and time.
Mayor, basically what we've got to the point of with the analysis of as far as repair goes, they would essentially have to tear it down to be able to fully repair it.
Right.
So we're at the point where it's almost unfortunate that we can't make any reasonable repair other than tear it down and start all over again. That is essentially the repair that they're advocating for. And so if we're gonna start over, the hope is that we'll do it right this time. And then we've gotta figure out how. But I feel confident we can do it right. The getting to the how, we're gonna finance it is the challenge.
Counsel, any other comments, responses? Again, this is not for vote this evening. It's to get it in front of everybody because we will have to make some decisions later this year and beginning of next year, especially if we end up trying to use bonds for this in addition to roads or instead of, or whatever it is.
Can I just add a last summary of this? I want to acknowledge, you know, this group has made and the conditions they've been working in. Every week, there's something going on. And so this issue does need to be kind of addressed. We need to talk about it and see where we want to go. But the good news is, the effort that this group has spent, we've learned a lot. We have learned a lot. We know our conditions we live in, but we learned a lot what's out there. We learned what we're capable of doing. And so I call this the good and bad and the ugly phase, right? You got the good, we're learning. It's a dream phase. We got the bad. We gotta figure it out. And so there's some ugliness we gotta get through. But I think if we can keep some momentum going, conversation going, we're not gonna lose the, what we've effort we've got here because there's a lot of good news here, a lot of good learning we've done. And I think it's one of those that we probably need to set a path in the near future just so we don't lose what we've done here in the last few months and show that we have interest in doing something.
To that point, Mr. Olin, is there any directive that you would ask from counsel this evening just to either authorize additional work or to, you know?
Not right now. I think we wanted to come back by the end of the year, have another touch base on this and then definitely a significant conversation during the retreat in February.
All right.
Yes, sir.
So I just have a couple of questions for both of the chiefs. If I can get them to both come up here, please. I just want to know individually and jointly what their opinions are on a couple of things. Hello.
Good evening.
Evening.
I didn't hear.
I didn't hear the question either.
It wasn't really a question. I just wanted to get you guys both up here. So my question to you is I just want to hear from y'all individually and jointly. What are your thoughts on the individual? Like each of you having maybe per se, if you find somewhere else for you guys to go and then just tear your whole building down and start over fresh and then have the fire department have their own place? If it's not feasible for us to have like that much land? Because I'm understanding what everyone's saying is that this is something that you guys need right now. And that if we keep kicking this can down the road, that it's just gonna get worse. The costs are gonna rise. The stuff is not gonna be able to be repaired. And, you know, your jobs and what you guys do for our city is important. So I just want to hear your thoughts and what it is that you say that you need us to do, please. Or what you would prefer, your preferences.
We've obviously, we've got to do something. We, even the new addition that we had a few years ago, we've outgrown that already. The overall condition of the building is just, there's nothing I can see positive out of what we're currently at. So we've gotta do something. I always thought from the beginning that a joint facility, same, similar what we've got now, public safety, we could maximize shared space. Maybe it would help us some on the cost. We're transient as far as a police department. I don't need to be in a specific area to police because a lot of our officers police from their vehicles anyway. So it's kind of like wherever the fire department needs to go, if we're gonna do a public safety complex, we can kind of follow. We can be part of. My concern about doing two separate is more of a selfish reason to do separate is because I don't think the city would do two projects at the same time. So somebody's gonna have to be first up to the plate. Who's gonna be the one that's gonna get left behind? If anybody gets left behind, will it fall off the radar? And then the one that got left behind stays behind. But I think we can maximize our efforts if we stay together by doing shared space, public space, if it's configured correctly. I was hoping there was gonna be more of a cost savings to do it jointly. I think the only thing I could see is we're looking at a million dollar savings if we were doing it together. And I know these numbers aren't concrete, but I'm just saying. For me, obviously, we've got to do something. I'm kind of the pro shared space as opposed to.
And I agree with him. We've got to do something. You know, we've got guys that sleep there and the issue we had before and, you know, thanks to you, we were able to get that cleaned up pretty quickly. But as you heard from Ben and Andy, this isn't gonna stop. It's gonna keep coming back. So, yeah, we need to do something. And I am a big fan of the shared public facility. I think Mike and I work really well together, but we have the shared space. And one example of that is the job for emergency management, the joint operations center. All the equipment came from PD on a grant. So that equipment moves with him and we're separated now. From a public safety standpoint, we're moving people from fire over to the police station. And we lose a lot, I believe, by separating us. I think we gain more by keeping us together.
So from what I'm hearing, there's no way, I'm just asking, just for clarification, there's no way that if we had a temporary spot for you guys to go and a temporary spot for GPD to go, would there be a way and enough room at the location you're at now to tear that place down and come up with a design and build something that's gonna work for all of you? Like right now, in your mind, what are your thoughts? Is that not enough space?
I don't believe it's enough space when you start looking at the growth. Just to give you an example, a lot of the chief officers, we share offices. I share an office with the deputy chief. My training division, they share an office. So that space is so limited with the hub being there that there's really not a lot of room. And I'm not a builder, but in my opinion, there's not a lot of room for growth to make up the needs that we have.
Even if we went high?
But, I mean, that is something we could probably talk to Andy about and see what, you know, what kind of square footage on that space. But he spoke about the ground not being, it's settling now. So I didn't know if, again, we have to talk to the experts on whether that's viable or not.
Personally, I think the footprint is too small in that block because you gotta share the space with the hub. Fire departments, apparatuses, they, you know, they need a lot of surface area to operate to get in and out of the bays. They don't really be doing a lot of this backing, so they need a lot of surface area. By the time you put two departments in one building, now you gotta have parking for the people, public parking to have access. I've got an evidence facility that we've got to manage on. I just personally, I don't, even if you went up, I just think the initial footprint is just gonna be too big for where we're currently at.
And so being that this, these facilities are the way they are and it's getting worse every day, how's that on the morale of your teams?
We've talked about it more here recently and, you know, the current topic of discussion right now is personnel for us and recruitment. What do we, we can put a competitive salary together and I think we've got a competitive salary with other agencies, but what else do we have to offer to our employees? We've got a building that's collapsing around us. We've got unhealthy working conditions around us. I think that's, you know, we got a gym that we can't use. That used to be the perk that we had. Other agencies didn't have gyms on the property for your employees to work out on, work in. Same for the fire service, but now we've got a gym that we can't use. Morale is, me not so much because I've grown up in that building for 33 years. But the newcomers that come in, new officers and new firefighters, when they see what the conditions they're working in, hard to stay motivated to want to stay.
And to that point, the fact that we've had that mold issue before and they know it's coming back again. The firefighters keep asking, you know, I'm sleeping here. Are you testing? Are you gonna test this year? Are you gonna test? So it's a constant reminder that we have to look at in doing that every single year. So it does affect their morale. Guys who have allergies, you know, you're obviously gonna ask the question, is it mold or is it my allergies? So it does affect them, you know, daily when they, when they talk about it.
So I'm guessing what I'm hearing is that you guys want to stay together. You want to find land that's gonna fit every, all the needs. Right? So I personally think that we need, this is something that we need to task ourselves with, like ASAP. But I'm just one person and I'm just one voice, but I'm all for it and I'm all in. So I just want to let you know that, you know, whatever we need to do to try to start finding some land, I really wish we could make this happen.
I appreciate it. From the fire department.
Thanks.
Counsel, any other comments, questions? All right, hearing none. Gentlemen, thank you for your time. Sir, thank you. Excellent job, sir. Thank you. And we will, that actually concludes our Section 8 New Business. That is another presentation that was as part of the electronic packet. I would print that one and hold on to that one or ask Musket to print if you'd like it. But that was gonna be another one that comes up because of course we are gonna have to find the funding if in fact we choose to move forward in some way. All right, so let's move to Section 9, our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have new art downtown. Switching gears a little bit to art. I think it looks really nice and just encourage you to get out there and take a look at it. I think that's a good program. Gets people coming back into downtown and checking out the artwork. We've had a lot of growth over the last several years. So in about a month, I'm asked the planning department to give a five-year analysis of where the growth has been and where we think we're going in the next five years. And some, you're gonna see some more major projects coming up before you. So just wanted you to be aware of that. We've got Duke Energy here doing what they call a vegetative management project. So they're going through and taking a lot of the trees and down in the limbs that are around the power lines. So if you've got some areas that you see, let me know. One area we're gonna focus in on is Beal and Brazil Street. I've got their approval to go in and clear a lot of that away. I'm also gonna have Public Works Department go in there and take out a lot of those underground bushes and trees, undergrowth. And that's gonna help that area. It's gonna help with the illumination of the lights that we've got back there. And a lot of the, a lot of the things that are going on back there are hidden. So taking out a lot of vegetation, that's gonna be something we'll be doing over the next 30 to 60 days. Another project that we're gonna take on in-house and it's something that's been a priority for a lot of folks. It's a water looping project. That was one, going to be one of the project for Hawthorne Trail. We'll kind of tie it back to their special use permit. But the reality is, is that we can do that project in-house and save several hundred thousand dollars and help the pressure of the residents out there in that area. Also, we're starting to look at, and we'll come back to you with this, with a traffic calming and how we're gonna do that in the future, how we're doing it now and how we intend on doing in the future. And looking at various ways to do that. And I know it's becoming more and more of an issue. We heard a little bit about that tonight. And there's, we have some ideas there and how we're doing it now. And you'll see some studies that we've done now at the behest of some council members for traffic and high volume or just safety concerns that folks have in their various districts. I think that's, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We'll move to Section 10, Mayor Councilmember comments. It is the second meeting of the month, so as that will begin for our representative from District 6, Councilman White.
I don't have any comments, man.
All right.
I just have one in District 5. I don't know if you guys have rode by and saw it, but we began moving forward with taking down the gazebo. So the gazebo was taken down. So I'm excited to see what our next phase and what our next step's gonna be in that area. And also, we have some new housing coming into our area. I'm not gonna steal his thunder, but thank you, Councilman Boyett, for allowing me to tend that with you. And then, City Manager, thank you so much. There were some issues over in my district with Williams and things like that. Helped me to get some of that situation resolved. So I'm extremely grateful to you and to the whole entire team. I saw you guys in action and I'm extremely grateful. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Just want to say a public thank you from this platform to Public Works and Public Utilities for all your help in the district and allowing me to tag along and ask all the thousands of questions that I did. It was a pleasure getting to know you guys and what you do every day to help the city stay running. So I appreciate you for that. Just want to remind the district that we do have our conference call this Thursday at 6 o'clock. It's specifically for District 4, but anybody is welcome to join that call. Also, just want to give a heads up, breast cancer awareness month is coming up next week. And I've told this story before, but not too long after I turned 30, I had my own breast cancer scare. So for there, I kind of just threw myself into this healthy lifestyle, ended up becoming a certified group fitness instructor and I began to instruct a class called Work. It is a high intense cardio dance class that I've decided to start offering for the past couple of years for free, virtually every Tuesday in the month of October at 7:00 PM. So you are more than welcome to join me. The link drops before. The link drops before every class on Tuesday at 7:00. We're going to do a lot of dancing, have a lot of fun, and burn a whole lot of calories. So mark your calendars for that, ladies and men, okay? Me and you can come in there Tuesday with us. You are more than welcome. So thank you to everyone in the district for all your support and love and the camaraderie that we're creating amongst ourselves as neighbors and as friends. I love you and good night.
I think the mayor's going to be the first one to sign up there.
You're not wrong. First up?
Yes, I would like to thank the mayor for allowing me to attend the North Carolina Mayor's Association. It was an excellent experience for me. They did, they had a session there where they called the minute, the mere minute, and it was really a minute. And they, you had to talk about some good things about Goldsboro. I talked about the $6 million water infrastructure overhaul. I shared the $250,000 grant for all-inclusive playground. I shared the 500 jobs that will be coming into the city and the housing projects that we have. UKAN, and I also talked about how proud I was of our first responders in Wayne County, our policemen and fire department that went to Asheville during the hurricane. I was very proud of that. I shared the UKAN development, and it was a wonderful experience. I also would like to thank Public Works and a city manager for all that you do and help in my district. You have really been good with getting the leads and helping me with moving away the snakes in my district because that has really been a problem lately, and I really appreciate And for my District 1 and two captains, I thank you so much for always keeping me informed. We talk daily. I also want to thank city manager for when we had the fire in that area. He was right there. I also had my captains were down there checking out, seeing what we could do, even though I was not in town. And that is a really good thing to have constituents that you really can talk to, and they share things with you, and it's just great. And thank you, District 1.
My turn. So I just want to thank all the city employees and all the citizens of Goldsboro. I'm just so excited. I really want to give a special shout-outs to Mr. Livingston, Mr. Stanley, Mr. Arnold, Lopez, Jonathan, all you guys have been great. Sometimes I open up my email recently, and I get so excited because something that I'm seeing in my district that I have to talk about, like on Beale Street, where, where for years and years, they have been using that corner as a dump, even though there is a big sign there that says "No Illegal Dumping." I have struggled and struggled and struggled with the trash and just having to call in, do 3-1-1s and call Public Works and ask, like, "Hey, can you pick this up? Can you pick that up?" And it just really makes me feel great to be able to call the city manager or call or email and see that this stuff's getting done and that District 3 is, is really, parts of it that for so long were forgotten about are really getting, getting their share now. And so that really excites me. I also know that lately, we've been talking a lot about communication, whether it be Facebook communication, YouTube communication, any kinds of communication. And I really want to talk about the communication that we get from our constituents, from our employees, from just business owners in our community that do business with us, and they send us emails, they call us, they write us letters. And I just want you guys to know, everyone that's doing that, that it does not go unnoticed. Like, we get these emails, we get these letters, and we get these phone calls, and I thank you personally because how would I know about all the issues that are in my district and in the city that need to be resolved unless someone told me? So, once again, I just want to thank everyone, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Sir, please.
As always, thank you to each and every one of our hard-working city employees. You're all valued and appreciated, and this city could not run without you. Always like to say that. An extra shout-out for our Public Works team that are working so diligently to catch up on our leaf and limb situation that some equipment got us into. I had two people stop me today during lunch and say, "My stuff got picked up," or this or that. So the people are noticing that, and I know that we have a very dedicated team that's out there making it happen every day, that cares about their, what they're doing. And they're, they're of much value and appreciated in that regard. The ribbon cutting that Councilwoman Weeks spoke of, that was a pretty exciting thing. Another addition of workforce housing in my district. We had a ribbon cutting this past week. I think it's 48 units in total. That's very much needed. This particular complex is going to be over on Graves Drive near Malloy Street. And it's an ideal centrally-located area. I think it's great to have some there. It's, for reference, it's the same sort of development that's currently at Central Heights and Thoroughfare Road, same type of development there. So it was exciting to be able to be there for the ribbon cutting, and I appreciate the mayor and manager and Councilwoman Weeks and folks that were there to attend that with me. Also, was able to attend the United Ways kickoff. That was great. Had a, had a good time there of that. We had an honorary commander social out on the base that Mr. Murphy and I attended. It was a pretty good deal. Another thing, and I guess last but not least, to piggyback off of what Councilwoman Taylor was just talking about, about communication, I know I can speak for everyone to say how much we value and appreciate hearing from our constituents because that's what we're here for, to serve our constituents. And I would take the opportunity, since Councilwoman Taylor mentioned it, to talk about the 3-1-1 system again. I never miss an opportunity to promote that. For those that are watching, it was mentioned by, well, there had a couple of folks that were before us this evening, and one had a traffic concern and some different things that there are, there are ways to be able to get that information to us. I know someone had mentioned making a comment or being able to make a comment on a Facebook post or something because they weren't able to attend the meeting or couldn't attend the meeting due to physical limitation or whatever. But it's just very important for folks to know that those mechanisms are in place to report to us because making a comment on a social media platform is not ensured that it's going to make it to this board. There are some of us that have publicly stated that don't, don't use social media. So it's important to point out that there is a mechanism to do that. So if you, the good news is, if you have internet access to access social media, that means you also have that internet access that you can send us an email if you go to the city's website. Each one of your council members, myself included, as well as the mayor, click a button and send us your concerns. That does some, it does a couple of things. But first of all, it documents, because that's a public record, and it documents that you have made a suggestion or expressed a concern. Same thing with the 3-1-1 system. The 3-1-1 system allows any of our citizens that has a concern to be able to go into that 3-1-1 system and state your concern. You can attach pictures to it, and you can direct where that goes. And it does a couple of things. It guarantees that person that reported it a response. If you do not want to make the report and receive a response, the option is there to make it anonymous. So if you choose to, to have a, want a response, if you report your concern, whether it's speeders, whether it's a plethora of things that you would have a concern with, the easiest way to get to it is why I tell people, go Google "Goldsboro NC 3-1-1." It'll be the very first thing pops up. You go and use that, choose from your drop-down menu of what your concern is, enter your concern, and click, click the button, and it comes directly to the city, and it is directed to the department that's appropriate to address that concern, and you're guaranteed a response. And that's very important to point out that to our citizens, we want you to be able to communicate with us. We want you to be able to reach us, but there's a channel to do that that guarantees that your, your wishes are just that, that you have ability to communicate with us if you can't come here personally. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I know that we have a robust closed session ahead of us, so I will try and be brief, but there's just a few organizations I want to say a big thank you to. Before I get to that, the budget conversations from this evening, as you're digesting this, members of the public who are, who may still be watching, you know, members of my fellow members here on this board, we have a lot that we have to think about between now and mid-spring, late spring, when we're pulling together an actual budget. We have things that need to be done through the utility fund, and that's where you're looking at your, your water and your sewer stuff, which we know investment has to happen there. And then you look at your general fund things. Everything tonight is general fund. Everything tonight that was referenced is general fund. Yeah, that, it's, it's not an easy compromise in figuring out how we're going to do this. But I appreciate everyone's attention, appreciate the primers this evening to make sure that we're able to, to pull as much information together as possible to make some good decisions. That doesn't include things that I'm passionate about, like Parks and Recreation. There's so many things that have to come out of general fund. We've got some really, some really hard conversations ahead of us. But we also have a lot of positive things that we're going to need to be able to factor into that, including growth and economic development. You know, we've had some wonderful successes through our partners with WCDAs. We've also had some wonderful successes in residential units, as has actually been alluded to already. Between last meeting and today, we were able to work through an annexation petition for an entire chunk of property on the western side of the city that will be market-rate housing, whenever it's done. That's going to be a significant, a significant taxable piece of our, of the base if and when that gets developed over the next couple or, couple or few years. Then you've got Abbot Crossing right off of Graves that is workforce housing. That's hitting folks that are between 30% to 80% LMI. That is people who are working their day jobs and are trying to figure out how to make everything meet. And it's absolutely amazing to be able to see that in a window of time, we were able to touch multiple points on that respectable housing for every citizen, for everyone in the city, commitment that, that we've spoken of. Since last meeting, we have gotten a chance to be, to be represented on the Chambers Rural Healthcare Summit. I so appreciate it, being able to be a part of that, be a keynote with that. The amount of energy that goes into healthcare, trying to support and understand what is needed for this community is, is remarkable. We have some amazing leaders, but we have some amazing challenges that are ahead of us. And I so appreciate our county health director joining me on stage and doing a 45-minute keynote and just talking through all the different challenges that the department is going through and how it impacts the city and how we plan our city and our resources and the things that we have to have in place. The Chamber also hosted their annual Eggs and Issues event just last week. If memory serves you, it's all kind of bleeding together, but Mr. Livingston and myself represented the city. Sheriffwoman Acock and Mr. Crumbler represented the county. And that, again, another hour and 10 minutes, hour and 40, hour and 20 minutes, something like that conversation around needs of the city and the county, and the school system even got implicated in a really positive way about the things that are going on right now. Our school system, which, again, we don't directly fund, but we certainly try to support in ways that we can, the school grades are increasing. And it was discussed that year-over-year tourism spending increased $4.7 million from last year to the year prior. That's big, especially when you consider most of that spending is happening in and around the city of Goldsboro, between the Bryan Center and the, between the Maxwell Center and the Bryan Motorsports Complex and the other Parks and Recreation facilities that we have. They're a major, major, major boom force. This past weekend, while ProTim was kind enough to represent the city at the Mayor's Association, I was with Friends of Seymour representing the city of Goldsboro at Langley Air Force Base, having a conversation, an annual trip that Friends of Seymour was able to pull together to go and greet the now, now four-star Major General Spain, who's over Air Combat Command, to talk about how Goldsboro and Wayne County can best position ourselves for the next mission for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and what we can be doing to best support the, the men and women and their families that defend our freedom every day through Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. Wonderful conversation. I appreciate their support on looking at some more housing options and some, some very important things. And I appreciate Friends of Seymour for pulling that together and Major Spain and Major General Spain and his entire team. Hats off to you. Just could not be a classier group. Just wonderful conversation. Last thing I'm going to say, and then I'm going to end on this. Parks and Recreation, you're going fast and furious on summer, on, sorry, soccer and baseball right now and flag football. Keep it up. You know, the Bryan Motorsports Complex is packed right now between events during the week and then on the weekend. Just absolutely amazing stuff. I've said it, and I will continue to say it. If you're looking for a way to make a difference, and you're in a church or civic organization or whatever else, get a group of kids, volunteer to coach, and go, go form a soccer team or go form a baseball team. It's absolutely amazing seeing those kids come alive, and whatever it costs to keep that facility up and running, it's worth it because there's just an amazing amount of family involvement that goes on there. And last thing, then I'm going to truly end on this. Cherry Hospital hosted a 145-year anniversary celebration this past week as well. Got to be there and greet the staff and make some remarks. Just an amazing citizen here, or corporate citizen, if you will, here in the city, an amazing asset, the way that they work with GPD and the Sheriff's Department, trying to meet the needs of our community while also themselves trying to figure out how they're going to meet their own needs. They need 78 nurses tomorrow. Can't find them. Hospital needs a couple dozen nurses tomorrow. Can't find them. So really amazing conversations over just these last two weeks. I'm ready to take a week off. Not sure that's going to happen, but we'll see if we can get there. So with that, I will yield. It is 8:31. Counsel, I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss matters related to real estate acquisition, potential litigation, and content that is privileged and/or confidential.
So moved.
All right, motion's been made. Do we have a second? All right, motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any debate? Hearing none, we will call the votes. Let me see if I can light my iPad up. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes on a six-to-one vote. We will go into closed session. Counsel, if you will join me in the ante room after a brief break.
The candy allotments are, uh...
Back on?
We are back on. All right, we are back in open session. Uh, we have one item to come before council as a result of closed session. Council entertain a motion to authorize the city attorney to retain certain outside counsel to provide legal representation to and on behalf of the city regarding any potential Oxford House litigation.
So moved.
Motion that made and properly seconded. Is there any further debate? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. All right. That is our only motion to come from closed session. With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to adjourn. Uh, there's no debate on that motion. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes. We stand adjourned.